Meanwhile, if anyone on the school committee knows someone trying to contact the meeting who am the school committee by phone, we're going to need their phone number to identify them to let them into the room.
Enable you're all set to go.
All right, very good. You, welcome everyone to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council and the school committee for our joint budget session here. It is Wednesday, April twenty twenty. The time is seven o'clock. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Our town clerk Susan will lead us. So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we can sort of get this meeting underway. I believe most of us are here. Jacey, you're upside down.
I'm upside down. I know. I don't know why. My cat, my cat touches the stupid screen. I don't know how to fix it. I'll mute myself and try to fix it.
All right. Well, first things first, will the clerk please take the role?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Decruze.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilman MacIntyre.
Here.
There you are. And Councilman Bealy.
Here.
All the council members are present.
Thank you. And I would just at this point ask all the school committee members who are on the call to identify themselves. And going forward with these Zoom meetings, what we've been doing is every time you speak, please identify yourself for the people who are on the phones and can't see us on the screen.
Stephanie Cantor is here.
Kate Massenanti is here.
Jacey Northrup is here.
Emily Kamisky is here.
Michelle Brusseau is here.
Sarah Markey is here.
That everybody. All right, well, we'll see if anybody else joins. Item four on your agenda, as you can see, is a public hearing with school committee participation relative to the town council's preliminary budget of the fiscal year 2020 through 2021, as adopted on March 23rd. This public hearing will address all funds contained within the town council's preliminary budget. So I think probably a good place to start off is with Rob. I know you spoke at some length at our regular meeting on Monday, sort of talking about where we are in this environment. And so, yeah, take us away.
Thank you. This is Rob Zornetsky, town manager. Zach Saul and I, Zach being our finance director, have spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of weeks since the preliminary adoption. And I'll remind the public and members of the council and school committee that when we came upon the date for preliminary adoption, we were really just a few days into this COVID-19 response. And the recommendation that we made at the staff level to the council was that we proceed with adoption of the preliminary budget and that we come back and look at our circumstances as information evolved. So over the last few weeks now, Zach and I have spent a good deal of time thinking about where we are, where we think we're going to be six months and a year out, and what we think makes sense for the council and the community going forward in terms of budget for the next fiscal year. So I'm going to share a presentation at this point, and I'd like to talk through sort of the general principles that are guiding the advice that we're giving to the council at this point. We are recommending amendments to the preliminary budget. And I'm going to start off with a slide that outlines those because I don't want to sort of bury the lead or keep folks in suspension. But these are very generic. This is a very broad set of recommendations. There's a lot of, it's a framework for reframing the budget, if you will. There's a lot of opportunity for the town council to make changes within this framework. So I'm going to lay out those, those recommendations. And then I'm going to lay out an explanation of what brought us to the conclusion that those represent, hey, those recommendations represent. So with that, I'm going to start this screen share and we'll walk you through it. It does take a bit of time to get through this, and I apologize, but there's an awful lot to go through. All right. So the recommendations that we're making to the town council is that we stick with the charter mandated budget schedule. The budget schedule is not particularly aggressive. It would have us adopting a final budget by May 1st. The charter dictates a budget be passed by the town council by May 1st each year. There are communities around the state, and I'll get into this toward the end of the presentation here, that are looking at various strategies, but they're all in very different circumstances than we are. The town of South Kingstown is fiscally very, very sound. In fact, we met with the Moody's Rating Organization the other day, two days ago. We had an interview last week and talked about the circumstances that we find ourselves in. We described to them what we were doing about COVID-19. And the bond rating agency said, you guys have got this down. We're going to maintain your highest rating in the state of Rhode Island. So we're in pretty good fiscal shape. We've got the reserves necessary to get us through this crisis if it lasts a year. If it lasts more than that, we begin to get a little nervous about things. But we've got enough reserves and enough resiliency built into our fiscal structure so that we can do what we need to do to get through this crisis. We are recommending that we ensure that no tax increase will accrue this year. We're recommending that we hold the tax rate at zero percent increase. And because this is not a reassessment year, that would mean that everybody's tax bill would be the same next year as it was last year, this year. There's one exception to that. If you've done work on your home and therefore the value of your home has increased, you would see the increased tax bill associated with the construction, the addition to the home, that kind of thing. We would achieve that no tax increase doing two things. We do have some operational savings that we've been able to identify primarily in the health and benefits program on the municipal side. And then the other piece is really just drawing funds from the rainy day fund. It is raining. In fact, it is arguably pouring out there and drawing on that fund makes sense. We will be recommending, again, I want to stick to the generic sort of broad, high level thing here. But in order to get to a zero percent tax increase, we'd need to draw down an extra $900,000 worth of reserve funding or undesignated balance funding. You'll see later in the presentation that that is not any tremendous hardship. We spoke to Moody's about that plan. They knew that that was part of our strategy for dealing with COVID-19. And they understand that rainy day funds are there for just this purpose. So I'm not at all nervous about making that recommendation. It not only does not affect, threaten our bond rating, it has not, when disclosed to the rating agency, affected our bond rating. And I would argue that using that balance in this way is part of what impressed the rating agency that we had this, this crisis well in hand. Now, things change. Right now, we're in very good shape. Instead of a single conditional property tax transfer to the schools, we are recommending a series of conditional transfers throughout the year. What this means, and this is a, this is a new strategy here in Rhode Island. But there's nothing that requires that the town council make a single property tax transfer once in the year. There's no reason why we would have to give a 2% property tax transfer and live with that throughout the course of the very uncertain year. We can transfer, authorize transfer transfers over the course of the year, which means that as conditions change and conditions are met, the transfer could happen. Rather than giving 1%, 2% property tax transfer at the beginning of the year, for example, we could establish a structure where 1% is given at the beginning of the year and an additional 1% is given in the middle of the year if the schools are operating under normal circumstances. Now, part of what this addresses is the circumstance that we've seen this year with the bus transportation contract. The schools will realize about a million dollars in savings because they were not, they were not using the school bus service since March 13th and will not be using it in like, in all likelihood for a good bit of time. The way that the property tax transfer, a single transfer works is once the transfer has been made, the school committee has those funds. So the savings that we've seen this year cannot be put to relieving property tax burden on the taxpayers. It's in the school's budget and it will go to undesigned fund balance because that's what has to happen to it. If we were to do it as multiple transfers over the course of the year, you can determine the conditions as you go and not make the transfer to the schools if they don't need the money. So again, 1% now, if they need buses in September, maybe another 1%, but that's the concept that we're working with there. We are recommending that we maintain our debt service assumptions. That is that we put the money aside as if we were going to pursue the bonding that we have been talking about here in the community. Continue to get the projects shovel ready, but defer all due, excuse me, defer all new debt commitments. We are not recommending going to referendum for 85 or 6.5 million dollars in November. We're recommending that we do not incur new debt commitments. One of the things that the Moody's report did indicate is that additional debt could have an impact on our rating. I'm not too concerned about impacting the rating, but it's evidence of the sorts of things that analysts who are looking at the financial health of the community are concerned about. I'm concerned about it. Moody's noted it. And I think that we have to be careful not to incur new debt before we're, we're ready for it. I think that it makes absolute sense for us to continue to get ready. I think we want as many shovel ready projects as possible because there may be federal and state aid out there that comes our way. And we know from experience that if you're ready, you're going to win the competitions for those funds. So I think we need to push to get to completion on the drawings, on the permitting, on the things we need to be able to say to the federal government or the state government, we're ready to go. So we think we want to, we're recommending that we should continue moving towards shovel readiness, but we should not pull the trigger on assuming we're debt at this point. We are recommending that we establish an interest and penalties hardship waiver program for unemployed residents. We are not talking about forgiving taxes. We're talking about under certain circumstances, being able to waive the penalties. This has been a challenging issue for folks over the years on and off throughout, you know, throughout our, certainly through my, out my time here. And given the scope of the hardships that we're seeing, I think it makes sense for us to look at this, this year. We also think that it may be necessary and helpful for the town to establish a payment deferral program for commercial property owners. Again, if they can show that they simply can't make the payment because they haven't received rents in, you know, right now it's a month, it's soon going to be two or three, it could be quite a number of months. In that case, we would work with property owners to either establish a schedule where they pay on a monthly basis or work with them to figure out how we're going to get them on a schedule that works over time. Can we actually afford an $85 million bond over the next two years? That is obviously a question that folks are going to want to know the answer to. And the question is answered probably two different ways. With regard to our direct revenue ability, it's less clear now than it was back in, on March 1st. I don't, I'm not convinced that we do not have the revenue streams to do it. But I do think that the impacts on the community are such that the capacity for increased taxes has probably diminished significantly, at least for a significant number of people in the community. Should we abandon development of the facilities? I've covered this to some extent. I think the answer is no, because we need to be shovel ready. As of this date, as of today, I think we've got seven major shovel ready projects. We've got the Matunik Beach Seawall project, which is designed, permitted, and ready to go. That is one that we've made applications for. The application is complete. And we can submit that as soon as anyone says they're, they're accepting applications for construction projects. The Public Safety Radio Modernization Project's in pretty much the same, same boat. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Improvements recommended by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee are not quite to that level of completion, but I think could be made to be complete very quickly. The Old Mountain Field Facilities is again, not quite that complete, but there's no drawings, for example. But again, could be turned into a shovel ready project very, very quickly. The same is true for the community boat ramp at Marina Park. I think that the elementary school facility improvements are well enough along that if we needed to make an application for a federal or state grant and had very short time for doing that, we could get an elementary school facilities project before a grant making agency very quickly. And I think the same is true for the Broad Rock Middle School. There are some questions about the policy and the relationship between the middle school and the high school project, which I don't think is ready for, for submission to an agency at this point. That project still needs to be fleshed out before we could put it before any of the agencies that are going to be offering monies for construction projects. So how did we get to those recommendations? I mean, we've been puzzling over, you know, what do we know? And what we know is that unemployment claims are up nationally. Unemployment claims could hit 30%, 30%, which is the worst unemployment rate in the history of the country. It is an extraordinary unemployment rate. During the Great Depression, unemployment was at about 25%. Values of negotiable equity instruments, stocks and bonds are down, although they're up again by 25% from their lowest point since this, this crisis first hit. So markets are sending us mixed signals at this point. They are down. We still have significant losses for folks who rely on investment income. It's been a major blow. Based on conversations with hoteliers in town, revenues for hotels in South Kingstown are down 98%. I've spoken to a number of hospitality folks who are not in the hotel business, but Airbnb or seasonal rental. And the impacts there are similar. They don't seem to be quite as high. They don't seem to be 98% losses, but they're very, very significant. Retail revenues in South Kingstown are down 70 to 75% is our estimate based on conversations with folks at the South County Commons and other retail facilities here in town. On the other hand, there are some things that are happening that are good in the economy and some reasons for optimism that there is a new market or market's growing in this environment. Everything online is doing great. Zoom is doing well. Netflix is doing well. Grubhub is doing well. URI online courses are doing well. They're moving their summer courses to online now. We're already hearing that URI's classes will be largely online instead of in physical space. Now, there's a bunch of stuff that we don't know that leaves us sort of blind at this point. We've got unorganized or disarticulated data and information from sources that just don't share information based on towns. We don't know the unemployment claims by town. We don't know bankruptcy filings by town. We don't know evictions or foreclosures by town. These are all things that we'd like to learn. We don't know them yet. And we're going to have to work through figuring out how to get our hands on some of those data as we go forward. Some will be easier. URI's hiring plans for the fall of 2020, that would be a helpful thing to know because it tells us something about what the largest employer in town thinks is going to be happening. And we can find that out. We will, we will be talking to URI in the next few weeks. In fact, we're going to be talking to as many people as we can at this point. Because if we move to the next cell to the right, the things we, we don't even know we don't know are things we need to be, you know, sort of mining around for, looking for. We need to be engaging in conversations with the community, listening to anecdotal information. While anecdotal information isn't necessarily definitive, it does help us draw a picture and ask questions and start focusing our attention. Finally, the big unknowns, the things we absolutely know, we don't know that are going to be definitive here. How long is this going to last? We simply do not know how long social distancing policy is going to be in place. We've got a national government where the president is pushing for reopening the economy as quickly as possible. And that is certainly an idea that everybody can, can, you know, sort of sympathize with. On the other hand, we have health experts who are saying, we do not have a vaccine. And until we have a vaccine, we have people who are vulnerable to this illness. And we're not going to have a vaccine for a year or longer. We don't have a good therapy for this disease yet. So we can't even effectively treat the disease. Our treatment has largely been around letting it run its course and trying to keep people breathing while it's running its course. It's not, the prognosis for getting back to a normal, regular volume of economic and commercial transactions is not very good right now. It does not look like we are going to be business as usual in the next couple of months and maybe not business as usual. One of the, the things that I've read recently is until 2022, until we've got a vaccine. So it's also important for folks to recognize that as we're talking about a recommendation here that basically says we're not messing with the program, we're trying to maintain the programs that we have. It's important for folks to recognize that the public sector is different than the private sector. In the private sector, there's a mentality, an objective, a goal, a whole, a whole philosophy that says you've got to try to maximize revenue and minimize expenses. The public sector, that's not what we're told, that's not what we try to achieve on a regular basis. What we try to do is drive revenue down, keep it down. We'd want to keep taxes as low as possible. Drive expenses down where you can, but you've also got a real push to drive expenses up as you provide more services because the demand for more services is constant. So what we end up with is a, an aim, an objective, a goal in the private sector that says, try to keep your surplus as small as possible. Try to keep the amount of money above what you are using for services as low as possible. Because if you don't, you're taking money from taxpayers that you should not be taking. So this pushing toward the middle changes the way we budget, changes the way we organize ourselves, changes the way we do everything. We're not a private company that tries to maximize revenue at any time. And therefore, we don't have the sorts of reserves that a private company, a big corporation, a corporation of, you know, our size, a corporation with a budget in the $100 million range would have much more flexibility and much more reserve to draw on than we do. Nonetheless, we are in healthy shape here in South Kingstown. The private sector recovery and municipal program restructuring really gets at how long we can keep at this. How long can we use our reserves to offset a request for more taxes from our taxpayers? And really, if you think about what we do, this is the surplus we've got right now. If we're dealing with a V curve where the economy comes back pretty quickly, we're going to be fine because what we're going to use of that reserve is smaller than what's available. On the other hand, if the recovery takes a long time, we may not have enough reserve and we may have to change our programs in order to use the reserve we have and get to a point where we're back to the capacity of the community to pay. And finally, it's possible. It is possible. And we have to, we have to be planning for this possibility that this is a permanent adjustment in the capacity of the community to pay. That we are seeing a radical shift in the modern economy and that the community will never have the same capacity that it had in the past for the programs that we've provided, for the parks, for the, you know, the school program that we've had. This is a possibility and we cannot ignore this possibility. I don't think we need to jump to the conclusion that that's where we are, but we cannot ignore that possibility. So in my view, if you sort of look at the, the way this could play out, there are three scenarios. The first scenario is that we bounce back fairly quickly and that the surplus that we have is going to be sufficient to cover the deficit that we will have. And we'll know that. Right now, we're sort of to the point where we're recognizing that we're not going to have revenues coming in that meet our expenses necessarily. The middle of next year, we're going to know what our collection rate is, how we're doing on collections, how much, how many slow payments there are, how many people are calling to say, I really am struggling to make this, this tax payment. We're going to know by the middle of, of next year, a quarter or two into the year, we're going to know. But we can get through this with a relatively significant drop in, in taxes. We can get through the first year without any difficulty. Well, with some difficulty. So we've looked at what the default rate on taxes was at our worst, in our worst years on record. Currently and normally, in most years, we're great. We get about a 98% plus collection rate. We do not have default on tax payments in South Kingstown as a general rule. Part of that's because we still have one of the lowest tax rates in the state. We're the ninth lowest tax rate jurisdiction in, in Rhode Island. And we have a very high collection rate because people can afford generally the, the taxes that they're asked to pay here. When we had the Great Recession numbers coming at us, our default rate just about doubled. And we went to about 96% collection. That's the worst we've ever seen. Now, if that's as bad as it gets, we're again, not going to run into dire straits here. We're not in terrible shape. There are some analysis and some analysts out there who are suggesting that this event may be greater. In fact, I've seen a Goldman Sachs analysis that suggests four times greater than the 2007, 2008, 2009 events. So if we go to a four times that bad scenario, we're going to have to make adjustments. We are going to have to change our programs. Right now, I think our programs are probably, probably not in terrible jeopardy. But again, if what we see is that we never recover, then our programs will go beyond the capacity of the revenue stream. And we're going to have a problem because we can't stay there. So we'll have to adjust the program down. And again, we'll know that in a couple of quarters. And finally, there is the possibility that what we're seeing now is just the beginning of a problem. And we could see a worse collapse. If that happens again in the next quarter or two, we're going to know, not only have we got people who are slow in paying, we've got major defaults. And at that point, we're going to have to make radical change to our programs. But I don't think our objective ought to be to make those radical changes right now. Our job right now, the mission of, of the town government needs to be steady the ship, account for everybody, pay attention to everything that's going on out there in the community. Pay attention to the small businesses. Pay attention to the large businesses. Pay attention to the folks whose jobs have been lost and those who are still working. Figure out where we are. Assess the damage to our, our revenues. Assess the damage to the community in general. That's why we need to know things like the number of bankruptcy. It's why we need to be thinking about tracking tax payments over the course of the next two quarters. But it's not time to rush to the lifeboats. The problem with going to the lifeboats is it's a less stable ship. If we start jumping overboard, if we've got folks who are, if we're jettisoning. If we start jumping overboard, if we've got folks who are, are, if we're jettisoning programs, we're going to be potentially in more danger. We're gonna have a problem that we may not come back from. Our job here really needs to be to make sure that we set the community up to come through this crisis as well as it possibly can. We do not want to be abandoning the parks and then have the economy come back next summer and have crappy parks and have folks coming into town thinking about buying property who's saying, you know, I'm not gonna buy there, that, that place is looking shabby. We need to make sure that we are sustaining the programs that have made the community a great community to live and work in. That's part of our mission. We've just got to keep the, the ship steady. And finally, we've got to bring everybody home. We're gonna have to figure out how to work with taxpayers who are here. Nobody wants to see this environment or this, this set of circumstances tax people out of their home to, to see financial strife preventing people from staying in a community that they love. We need to figure out how to work together to keep everybody on board. I had a conversation with folks earlier today and I said, you know, when I was a teenager, I worked on fishing boats. And there was one storm that I was in out at sea where we had to tie everybody, every deck hand was tied to the rails because the waves were coming over the deck and knocking folks down. And there was a danger of folks being lost overboard. We need to make sure that everybody has a lifeline and everybody is in a, a position where, you know, we're not gonna let them slip under without knowing what's going on. We've got to be keenly aware of what's going on with everybody on board. So how, how far above the high water mark are we? We're in pretty damn good shape. We have a municipal undesignated fund balance of thirteen point five million dollars. The school undesignated fund balance is, i- it's a variable depending on what happens with some costs associated with special education and ultimate resolution of the termination of the transportation contract. They've got an undesignated fund of two point three to three point four million dollars. And this is a significant sum. It's been growing over the years. We're at a healthy sixteen point one four percent, which is on the high end of our policy, which is between ten and seventeen percent of our operating fund. We can afford to tap the fund balance for one point four million dollars and keep the programs on a steady level keel. We can do this now. This is not going to cause us hardship. And we can keep a zero tax increase for everybody in town without causing any difficulty for the, the program. There are some things that we can do to increase our buoyancy. Generally, the school bus non-performance on the school bus contract will generate about a million dollars, which will be available for some of the crisis spending that the schools are going to have to engage in. I mentioned that special education expenses are likely to rise. That's because during this period of time, when you're doing remote learning, you cannot provide the same special education services that you can in a classroom. So when this is done, federal and state law require that special education students be provided compensatory time to make up for the services that could not be provided for person to person. So there's gonna be some additional expenses there. But that, that money from the, the transportation contract will be available to cover those expenses. And we're hopeful that some of that money will be able to go back into the school undesignated fund balance. We will see some savings from snow removal. It's not a huge amount, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it will help. And we've looked at our municipal health and dental benefits and we can draw another two hundred thousand dollars out of that program to put toward tax relief. So with these elements and, you know, the savings that we're gonna see on the transportation contract covering some of the unexpected expenses that we're going to have, we're gonna be able to get to a zero percent tax increase without, without really too bad a hit on the undesignated fund balance in the general fund. I do want to point out that Moody's has looked at this recently and says, this is not gonna be a problem. Moody's has looked at our response to COVID nineteen. And interestingly, they're beginning to look closely at the way that shoreline communities are addressing sea level rise. They've looked at both of those things and said, you know what, you guys are okay. You're in, in pretty solid shape. So I'm, I'm comfortable, more comfortable actually with this recommendation that Ja, that Zach and I were cooking up after having talked to Moody's and sort of laid out some of these elements for them. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pursue this chart a whole lot. The important thing for us to recognize here is that there's two elements to our ability to keep our program going. There's the direct revenue drivers. What are the real estate values and what are the business receipts in, in town? Those two things determine whether or not we get paid by taxpayers. The real important point here is that this slide demonstrates that we could continue to run as a municipal government if real estate values stay relatively high. And it doesn't really matter who the taxpayers are. But that's not our objective. Our objective is to make sure that everybody who wants to live in South Kingstown, who lives in South Kingstown can, can continue to enjoy living in South Kingstown. And we've got to focus on that community capacity side to the left side of the line. It's not just about whether or not we can collect property taxes from somebody. It's that we want to be able to maintain a viable, enjoyable community for everybody who lives here. With that, I'm gonna just skip through these next little points on this. Actually, I will make this one last point. It is however, important to recognize that the relative desirability of South Kingstown is tied to the quality of the programs that we provide. The quality of our schools, the quality of our recreation facilities and programs. These are the things that are part of the things, they're not the only things. The number of restaurants, the quality of the beaches, the number of, of places where you can go out and have a, an enjoyable night. All of those things are what make a community desirable. We're not just dealing with a local market. We're not just competing with Richmond for potential home buyers. South Kingstown draws home buyers and businesses from throughout the Northeast. We get people from New York and Connecticut and New Jersey who want to come here because they, they stop by, they, they come here for vacation or something and they decide they like it. And they like it because of the amenities that we've built up. So our long-term interest is in making sure that we maintain that. That's the danger that in this crisis, we overreact. We start cutting programs in a way that undermines our ability to maintain what makes us an awesome place to be. There are a couple of things that I do need to, to point out because they're sort of counter intuitive because we are talking about a zero percent increase and we are talking about making some reductions. There are two things that we have asked for in the manager's preliminary budget that we are continuing to ask for. These are things that I think we just need to address. We can do these without, again, affecting the tax rate, but they are long-term commitments. We're looking for a halftime human resource generalist. If we find ourselves in a situation where we need to begin managing personnel halfway through the year, we're gonna need people who know how to do this and, and it, it could be heavy lifting. So our recommendation is that we not abandon that, that plan. And we also have an animal control superintendent that we have asked for in the preliminary, in the proposed budget. And again, this is a program that needs some management oversight and I, I just don't think we can afford to put this off unless we're going to abandon the animal control program. I want to address because it's out there and people would like to, you know, like to see us cut taxes. And we looked at it. We, we've asked the question, okay, what would a tax cut look like? Now, given that our tax base is about five point one billion dollars in total, every penny of taxes generates fifty-one thousand dollars in revenue. That sounds like a huge leverage point. It sounds like, you know, you take a penny away and you save but fifty thousand dollars and you just, you know, just keep doing that, take a few pennies here and there and all of a sudden you've got a lot of money. But it turns out that that is exactly the problem. Taking a penny here and there doesn't add up to much. For a household with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in value, a fifty-one thousand dollar tax cut, that's that part-time personnelist that we were just talking about, only saves about three dollars and fifty cents a year for that household. Every million dollars in program reduction would only save the typical property owner about seventy dollars a year. And remember, the attractiveness, the desirability of the community is tied to the characteristics of our program. I'm having some technical difficulty. I've frozen for some reason. So I'm gonna just close out this program and start so what would a million dollar program reduction, what would that seventy dollars a year get us? If we were to cut everybody's taxes, the typical property owner, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar value home, by seventy dollars, we'd have to cut one eighth of the entire police budget or one-third of the entire public works budget or one-half of the entire recreation and parks budget or one-half of the paramedics annual budget. We would have to completely eliminate the public library program or completely eliminate the harbor, animal control and assistance to all outside agencies and fire alarm programs combined. All of those would have to go away if we cut a million bucks out of the program and chose to take them from just those programs. So my point is that while it, it's appealing to say, let's get a million dollars worth of, of savings in the budget and provide some, some significant tax relief. We're not gonna be able to provide significant tax relief and we are going to severely detriment, severely undermine the quality of the programs that we provide on the municipal side if we took it there. Just some strategies that other communities are doing. I'm only going to highlight these because I don't think they're things that we necessarily need to do. Tax anticipation notes, borrowing money to get us through the hard times. We don't need to do it. We're a solid, on solid financial and fiscal grounds. We simply don't need to explore this possibility at all now. Six months from now or a year from now, under almost any circumstance, this may become an issue if we see revenues just dry up, but it's not. It's a highly improbable possibility. Some communities are talking about extending their two thousand and nineteen and two thousand twenty levy, just basically keeping the taxes from this year going into the next quarter. We're proposing essentially the same thing. We're just doing it by adopting a new budget, which is a cleaner, better, more efficient way for us to do it. We achieve the same objective here. No tax increase in the first quarter. We go better. We're not having a tax increase in the second, the third or the fourth quarter of next year, using the strategy that we're suggesting. Move to, uh, final adoption to June first. This is actually a strategy that a number of folks are doing. I would suggest largely because they haven't figured out how to have effective meetings online. I don't think we need to do that. I have suggested to the council in a memo recently that if anything, perhaps more meetings, although listening to me talk for this long, it may not be all that exciting a, a prospect. Having more meetings may make sense just so that the public feels that they have every opportunity to participate in the design of this budget. I would suggest that we stick to the established budget schedule and that we make the adjustments necessary to reduce the burden on taxpayers to the fullest extent possible. We are again, saying stick to the budget. We think we can get to a zero percent tax increase by doing some operational down reductions and drawing down on some undesigned fund balance. This bifurcation of the tax transfer would allow us to make sure that if there are changes that are happening throughout this very tumultuous time, the schools receive the funding they need as they need it. Maintain debt service assumptions for now, but don't, don't jump into any new debt obligations at this point. Establish an interest and penalties hardship program for unemployed residents and figure out if we can defer payments for commercial owners who can demonstrate that they cannot pay because of current circumstances. That's what I've got for a presentation and I'm happy to answer questions. We are not in bad shape. What we need to do is make sure that our reaction to this set of circumstances doesn't put us in bad shape.
Thank you, Rob. This is Abel Collins speaking. So we're getting to the point where we'll have council and committee members ask questions of the town manager, potentially superintendent about budget questions. Following all that discussion, we'll get to the point where we have public comment. And I think since we have so many participants in, in this sort of panel round, I'm gonna ask people to raise their hand and then I'll recognize you as, as you're, you know, queued up. So I see your hand raised there, Stephanie. I'll call on you first. One thing I just wanted to remark on following that presentation is I'm surprised that it's only gonna be, well, you're recommending only another nine hundred thousand from the unassigned fund balance. I thought it was gonna be more than that. So that would, seems to me, still leave us above around fourteen and a half percent in that unassigned fund of, of the, of the budget, which would be great. We want to be between ten and seventeen. It's still more than halfway in that range. The other question I had is, every year, the town council has like a sixty thousand dollar spending budget line item. I was wondering if we're maintaining that in the budget, if we have that still remaining from this current year?
So the answer is, the preliminary budget as adopted by the council does have that. And there'd be no, no need to change there being a contingency. We have expenses and we will be coming to the council with a report. There are some expenses that we've incurred that we will have to draw on the current year's contingency fund to cover.
Okay. And one, this is Abel again. One thought I had was, you know, if we do have extra money in that account, I would be in favor of asking around to some of the human service agencies that we know are gonna have increased demands during the recession and see if, if, if we can help them out with some of that funding that we have sort of at, at the council's discretion. So we can take that as it comes, I suppose.
Mr. President, if I may, we're staying in constant contact with the human service agencies in town. And the reports I'm getting are that generosity abounds. They're seeing donations. They're, they're really, they're really in very good shape to address the immediate issue. The question is, how long is this gonna last?
All right. Thank you. Those are my initial thoughts. At this point, I'll open it up to the floor here. Stephanie, I'm trying to unmute you here, see if it works. I don't think I've been given the ability to unmute people. All right, you should be good.
Okay, all right. Just mute, I just re-muted myself. So I, first of all, I want to just thank you, Rob. This was a really good presentation. It was, it was really interesting. It was informative and helpful. I, I felt seeing a visual and hearing you talk through it did help to make sense of it because we're all in this as community members in coming from, you know, all different cer, life circumstances. But I just really thought it was very informative, thoughtful, very reasonable. All of the ideas and the proposals here were very reasonable and positive. And I wanted to also thank you for including information on like the concept and requirement of compensatory time in special education because you know, there are, it's, it's just good to note that there are unanticipated savings as well as expenses that stem from shifting so quickly to a distance learning model for all of the students. And so I appreciate you including that. I have one question and this is really just from my own knowledge on the concept of undesignated funds. Should the municipal and the school undesignated funds be proportional to each other in the same ratio that the actual budget is? And you know, like, are both of them what you would consider healthy? And if so, why is it such a different ratio on the undesignated fund than it would be from the actual budget?
Yeah. So I, I'm gonna answer and then I'm gonna ask Zach Saul to, to jump in and Mary Ann Crawford to jump in. No, they don't need to be, you know, they don't need to be proportionate. The, the undesignated fund that the municipality holds The, the undesigned fund that the municipality holds is designed to deal with crises like this. It's designed to deal with total community events that need to be addressed, you know, as they arise. The undesigned fund balance for the schools is really a fund balance that's designed to deal with unexpected expenses that the school might incur. Typically, you're not gonna see this kind of thing. Typically, what we see with the expend, unexpected expenditures on a school budget are things like, you know, additional snow removal for, for, it's things like that as opposed to worldwide pandemic. Having a fund balance higher than fifteen, twenty percent is common in other parts of the country. In New England, seventeen percent, which is our high end of our policy, is considered very healthy. In other parts of the country, undesigned fund balances for the municipalities run much higher than that. Here, you know, it's just that, that New England thriftiness biting us in the butt a little bit, I think. In Connecticut, if you try to, try to maintain a surplus is what they would call it, a balance, you're accused of taking money from the taxpayers that you shouldn't have. The tolerance for a fund balance of sixteen, seventeen percent in Connecticut would be very, very low. They, they simply wouldn't accept it as a, as a policy choice. So the answer is no, I don't think they necessarily need to be proportionate. The community's fund balance should be sufficient to get it through crises. Here it is. We're in good shape. It does mean that you've gotta be careful with school funds, though. It means that, you know, as you're moving through the next few months, we've got to be watching carefully, which is part of the reason why I think it's important for us to set up a, a program, a design in this budget that keeps the municipality and the, and the school department working closely together over the course of the next six months and, and the next year. It shouldn't just be, here's the check, good luck. We need to be working together to get through this. Zach, any, any other thoughts?
Sure, so the fund policy is built, you know, as a range for a reason, so that you can maintain, you know, significant balances to address these needs that we face today. It's also important on the municipal side because we are rated by credit rating agencies. They are concerned with your fund balance. In New England, it is difficult. For example, we are the highest rated bond rating with an, with an exception of four or five, four other communities at double A one, and it would be a difficult jump for us to get to triple A because we are limited by state statute on how high we can raise our taxes. So it's hard for us to build a significant reserve balance to get to the level to be that, you know, top rated, but we are very close. We are rated on that, so which is why you see that big disproportion. So schools have a different, you know, objective. The municipal, we build it because one, we have to prepare for, as Rob said, the entire community. It is a significant factor in our rating, and if we didn't maintain that policy in that range, we could potentially face a, you know, a downgrade, and we don't want to be there.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you both. I have one more question, and I'm actually not sure if it would be Superintendent Savistano or Rob Zarnetsky, or even a combination of both of you as to who might already know or eventually know the answer to this, but. So the governor's emergency education relief fund, which was authorized under, it was like section one eight zero zero two of the CARES Act. I saw today that like the Rhode Island state component of that is eight, a little over eight point seven million. And it's obviously based on like, it's based on the student population that contributes to like Title One data and things like that. Do you have any information yet on how that is going to be distributed to the LEAs in Rhode Island and what, what the restrictions are that it can be used on, how quickly it can be used? I mean, if we were making an assumption that we have about two percent of the students in the state, if that's how they're determining it, then that's like a hundred and forty thousand, I think. I don't know that that's how they're determining it, but how soon will we know? And what are the guidelines or restrictions on where that money can be spent?
So Linda, I've, I've not seen any guidance on this.
Um, so superintendent had a meeting with the governor and the commissioner yesterday, and we know that it's going to be based upon the way we receive our Title One funds now, and eighty-three percent of it will go to the locals. And we don't have specific guidance on how it needs to be spent. We know that it will be restricted, much like other title funds normally are. But we don't have the specifics on that. Have another meeting tomorrow with the superintendent associates.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Stephanie. This is Abel again. Again, just a reminder to folks to identify yourself when you start speaking, even if I've sort of introduced you. And if you're doing a follow-up question, introduce yourself again. All right, Kate Massenanti, you are next up.
Hi, Kate Massenanti. So, Rob, this is kind of something, I jotted down some notes while you were giving your presentation just as a member of the school committee, as a community member, and as a parent, and as, as just someone who, who thinks kind of along these lines that there's one thing that we as a community need to kind of make sure we don't lose sight of, and that it's not just the physical health crisis, you know, going on with COVID nineteen. There's going to be, and they're already started. There's gonna be a major district-wide, community-wide mental health crisis that we're gonna be faced with. The extreme isolation that a lot of people, obviously, like, if you are lucky enough to be in a loving family environment, then, I mean, it's still hard. So if you're not lucky enough to be part of that, then it's gonna be devastating. So things that were rolling through my, my brain, and it does relate to our students as much as it relates to the rest of our community, is the mental health crisis will have an impact on employability of people. If you're in extreme isolation for an extended period of time, and then all of a sudden it's time for you to go out and interview for a job or have your life skills. It was interesting, I brought my eighteen-year-old to the grocery store in the middle of this, and someone gave me a hard time about that. And I was like, well, she needs to know how to deal with this. What if something happened to me, and now she's the one who has to go out? So life lessons still need to, to happen. It'll have an impact on municipal programs that our, our town offers. Will have a huge impact on our senior pop. Have Alzheimer dementia in a healthcare facility right now, and they're, they're completely isolated, removed from their family members. But that also impacts our students because some of our students have grandparents or parents who are in these situations. So, you know, an impact on our basic balance, as we've already noticed. So I just, in my brain, I just feel like from a municipal budget perspective, but also school budget perspective, we need to keep in mind there's a, there's going to be more than just the impact of the physical ramifications of COVID nineteen, but there's gonna be a whole mental health crisis that we're gonna see waving through over the next couple of years. So I just wanted to kind of make sure we don't lose sight of that.
Thank you, Kate. This is Abel. Any response to that at all, Rob?
I think that, that's right, and it's right in line with the idea of what government and, and the government budget and funding program is designed to deal with. The quality of life is one of the, maintaining a high quality of life is one of the primary objectives of local government. We have school programs, we have public school programs because we want to make sure that our children are equipped to deal with the world. And to the extent that the schools need resources to, to deal with a student population that's been traumatized, we, we need to, we need to account for that. We need to make sure that that's, that's possible. To the extent that we need to have good places where people can go and commune with nature and get out and enjoy fresh air, even as we have continued social distancing regiments in place for the foreseeable future, we, we need to do that. We, we need to find a way to make sure that people can live their lives, even though how we live is gonna change a bit over, over time. You know, it's very frustrating for someone who has spent his life trying to make sure that government only does good to, to be sending police out to keep kids from parking, not kids, but young adults from parking their vehicles so they can walk down to go surfing. We, we are all about making sure that people can enjoy their lives. And right now, we have to be policing parking, which prevents people from doing things they love. And that is, that's anathema to, to most of us who serve in the public sector.
Thank you, Rob. This is Abel again. Next on our list is Joe. If there's anybody else who wants to speak after Joe, raise your hand.
Hi, this is Joe, Joe Vili. So just a couple of reactions, Rob, to your presentation. I, I thought that the presentation was good and very informative, but a couple of reactions. I think one of the assertions that was made is that the tax rate is not going up. But we shouldn't, we shouldn't ignore the fact that spending is going up. And we know that people, at least in the short term, we know that people are challenged. Business owners, there are some businesses that haven't been able to reopen, some that have been able to open, as we learned in that Zoom meeting today, Rob, with the business owners, that they've been able to reopen, but maybe at twenty percent of what they were doing before, maybe less. What we don't know is how long these taxpayers, individuals who are employees of those businesses and the commercial properties, we don't know how long they'll be impacted. So I think it's, even though we call this a rainy day fund, it's risky to start using those funds at this, at this time when we don't know how long it, and I don't, nobody knows the answer to it, but we don't know how long that, that's gonna go on. I mean, you mentioned one point that thirty percent unemployment. Well, I mean, if that goes on for eight, ten, twelve months. So there, I, I think it's, I don't want to use the word misleading. It's not, it's not the total picture to say that the taxes are not going up because spending is going up and it's a tax rate. And, and, and by the way, the tax burden, while part of your presentation said that the tax, tax rate is not that low, the tax burden is in the top four percent in the country. You've heard me say that before. But the, the tax burden is very high. Another reaction to one of your bullet points was that we don't want to tax people out of the community. I think that we already have done that. Personally, I can tell you that both of my children were, were between home values and taxes, were, were not able to stay in the, in the community that they grew up in. So I think another part of your presentation, and we probably got this from Mary Ann or Linda. So there's, I guess, a pretty substantial savings to some of the remote learning, transportation being the biggest one. And I think part of your presentation said that that will go to their undesigned fund, but the town is then taking undesigned funds to pay for the increased spending. So that, that just strikes me as a little bit of a shell game that. And I know that they have other expenses because of the real remote learning, as, as you pointed to with the special education. I mean, I made a lot of notes. Just give me a half a second here. I, I, I think that at this point, the whole school building plan, in my opinion, should be tabled. We have no idea if we can afford that debt. And most of it, I mean, I questioned whether we could afford it before this happened. But most of it, again, is that unknown. If this is a three-month issue, then that's dramatically different than if it's a nine or a ten or twelve-month issue. So I was glad to see that we're, we're sort of gonna relook at that. But the, but the whole school building plan, I think, should be just put on hold. Again, nobody knows whether or not we can afford that kind of burden. We've, you've sort of admitted in your, in your presentation that we don't know if we can afford the level of programming we do now. And, and I, I mean, I appreciate why it's, why we're saying that. That's, that's, if, again, if it's a three-month problem. And, and then I think my other point, I'll come back to the beginning. I started to talk about taking money from undesigned funds to maintain a level of spending that I think at this time, in, in my opinion, isn't the right way to go. Taking nine hundred thousand dollars from reserves today seems like if it were a one-year issue, for me, is still a hard sell. But looking at your sort of charts there about how private and public revenue and expenses go, this could go real wrong real fast, and we maybe will reflect back and say we probably shouldn't have done that. So I, I think that if you, if you ask the average taxpayer under these conditions that are so uncertain, would you accept the same services as last year, or maybe less services? In, in exchange for lower taxes today, I think you'd find that the majority of the people would say, absolutely. These times are so uncertain for me personally, and for the company that I work for, I absolutely expect my town to act the same way. I may be back. Thank you.
So if I may react to that, Mr. President, I, I think that the, the point of, for me, the point of sort of identifying the difference in objectives in the private and the public sector is in part that we're just built differently. And it may be the case that the program needs to be changed. But what, what makes government a useful tool for society is stability. It's a stabilizing force. It doesn't, it doesn't change radically with the tide. It is a steady ship that continues no matter how choppy the waves get. These are choppy waves, and there may come a time when we have to go to the lifeboats. It's not yet. And if we were to cut personnel, a five percent cut in salaries across the board on the municipal side gets us that seventy dollars per household. We're gonna demoralize the workforce here. We're not gonna change the money flowing through the community. It's gonna be the same number of dollars going through the community. And we're not necessarily going to have the quality programs that have made the community a desirable place to be. I think we need to be prepared to go to the unions and say, look, things are worse than they looked like they were gonna be back in May or, or April of two thousand and twenty. We're now in October, November, and things haven't gotten any better. We need to be moving toward lifeboats. We need to come to the table, and we need to talk about what we're gonna do. Now isn't the time for us to do that. I'm worried about overreacting now, and I, I don't want to suggest that I think what you're, you're saying is an overreaction, but I'm worried very much about our, as a, as a municipal government, not overreacting and having no tools to work with in November, in December, in January, if a second wave hits. Right now, nine hundred thousand dollars more in undesigned fund balance is not going to put us in jeopardy of not having nine hundred thousand more if we need it in the future. As, as the council president has pointed out, this recommendation still leaves us with about fourteen percent undesigned fund balance, still giving us four more percent to work with, which is twice. It's a hundred, it's one point eight million dollars to work with if we get into year two and are in trouble. At that point, I'm with you a hundred percent. Getting toward ten percent makes me nervous as heck. Being at fourteen, I think we're okay. I think, I think this is not going to put us in jeopardy. If we were to go to If we were to go to the unions now, I think we'd also have a problem because it would be a violation of every union rep's fiduciary duty to their members to start giving, giving concessions in an environment this uncertain. It's just not the right time to be asking. We don't know enough to know the harm that may be coming. When we see the danger, we can react to it, and we have to be ready to react to it, but we can't do it yet.
Abel, can I respond?
Yeah, this is Joe again. So, Rob, I appreciate that. So a couple of points. Labor is not the only option here. So we, we know that it's, so on the school side, we know it's the lion's share of their budget. And on the town side, it's less than the lion's share, but it's, but it's a big part of it. But there are other things that we could delay in ways of equipment purchases and maybe supplies purchases, that kind of stuff, that we could delay for a year if that's what we're needed to be sure that the workforce was. I totally agree with you. We should not be going to the workforce and saying, we need you to take a cut in pay right now. Can that happen in the future? You just indicated that, you know, we would spot that quickly and we would deal with it when we had.
We do.
I totally agree. We shouldn't do that. But there are ways to level spend what we spent last year without affecting the labor side. I also think, to respond to one of your comments, that level spending or spending the same as, as last year does not indicate instability. I think that it's, it's what kept me in business for so many years. When you hit a rough spot, you sort of act conservatively. And then the nature of a, of a private business owner is when you're not hitting a rough, rough spot, you're, you're probably flying on one engine and happy. But I think that acting, fiscally conservatively at this point and spending the same amount as last year does not indicate to anybody outside of the, of we in the room here that, that is a sign of instability. I, I, I just disagree with that. I think that, I think it's very important that this is the, the one year that we need to level spend. Spend what we did last year, figure out a way to do it without impacting personnel and services as much as we can. And perhaps figuring out those line items that are, as I said, equipment purchases or supplies that can be delayed without impacting services or, or labor. Thank you.
Mr. President, it's, it's Rob Zarnetsky again. So Joe, you're, you're right. And I have asked every department head on the municipal side to begin drawing up contingency plans on a 5%, I'm sorry, on a 10%, a 15% and a 25% reduction in their programs. If we get to a point where it's necessary to execute those plans, we'll be able to do so. But now, they're in the process of developing those contingency plans. We don't have them. I can't execute them at this point. But we will have them come the middle of, of this fiscal year. We will be able to take drastic steps if necessary. On the level funding, or I'm sorry, the level spending element on the municipal side, we're already there. The budget that we presented had increases mainly driven by personnel contractual obligations. We had not increased, in fact, our capital budget when you take out the one project for the tax assessor's office that's mandatory under state law. We actually reduced the capital budget that we presented to the council this year over what was presented last year. We are level funded on the operations, for the most part, save personnel. And we are actually a reduction in the capital purchases that we've proposed and asked the council to approve. So I agree with you. We need to be fiscally conservative. We started this exercise in March, fiscally conservative.
So Abel, I'll be brief because I know other people want to speak. But I, I actually pointed that out in the preliminary budget hearing that we had, that I was so pleased with the municipal side of the budget. So I, the, I guess the last comment I'll make for a while is that I think the school side of the budget needs to step up and do the same.
Thanks, Joe. So Brian, I see your hand raised, but just before I get to you, Deb, you had your hand raised. Did you have your questions answered or do you know?
I, I will wait until this portion of the discussion's over. I have something on a totally unrelated, where, where, I, I can go now, I guess. So this is Debbie Kels, so I can go now. So Rob, I just had a couple of questions on the establishment of the waivers of penalties and the establishment of the deferral program. Is it something that you are currently working on, the parameters of the, of the programs? Are we modeling after something that's already in place? What, what's the, what's the plan?
So there's a bunch of communities that are trying to do this. There are some limitations in state law on what we can do. I've got the solicitor's office looking into drafting up a memo on exactly what that looks like. What we generally cannot do is forego the interest that state mandated. The statute doesn't allow us to do that, but we believe that we can waive local penalties and fees, or penalties and interest. And on a tax deferral program, if we were to do that for commercial property owners, the idea is simply that you're, you're staggering the payments, you're pushing the payment due date back. But you would still have the amount of tax due, and you would still have the total unwavable interest that the state statute requires. It would be the local interest and penalties that we could waive.
And, and when would the council expect to see the program?
I'm hoping for a memo back from the solicitor's office soon, maybe tomorrow. It's possible that I can give you an update tomorrow night.
And then I just have one more comment on the school building, school facilities development of stage two. So that stage two has been contracted. So right now, I think we should see that to its completion, at least through the stage two, because we have already contracted that. And then make our decisions based on the economic environment once the stage two is complete. But to stop it now serves no purpose. We might as well just let the stage two application be completed and submitted as it has already been contracted. And that's it for me.
Mr. President, if I, I can just talk to that point because I think it's an important one. I, I don't disagree with that. Again, the contract's in place, the work is being done, has continued over the last several weeks. And we need to be ready with projects. I, I had that list of seven. The high school is not one of them. And it may not be one of them by the time we're ready to say, we're ready to, to go to market and incur more debt. But if we stop the work on it, it certainly will not be ready. And we will miss potentially an opportunity for funding sources that are coming out of this $2 trillion from the federal government or the next stimulus package that comes from the state or federal government. So I, I think that having shovel-ready projects is very important. And if this is an important project that we think as a community needs to be pursued, then damn it, we should have the, the plans drawn up. We need to know what that project looks like.
Thanks, Rob. This is Abel. Next, Brian.
Thank you, Abel. This is Brian DeCruz. Couple things. One, I agree with Rob with not overreacting, but I also feel that we need to make sure that we remain to be fiscally responsible and conservative at this time. The other thing is with, with Joe's comment, I agree with Joe that spending is going up. It's just a different way of looking at it because we're talking about keeping the actual tax rate the same. But spending is going up, so we just need to be honest about that. I'm not saying that we're not being honest, but we just need to be clear that we are spending more, just taking it from somewhere else. There are a lot of unknowns, and you know, some of it's like, how long is this going to last? Nobody knows. I think we're doing a good job overall as a town managing it right now. The other thing, though, Rob, the meeting that we had today with local, that you had with local business owners that I sat in the audience on, you know, a lot of them are talking about tightening their belt. And I, and I think I brought this up in the preliminary budget about tightening our belt. And the reason why I bring that up is just because I don't want to see us run out of money at some point because we can budget whatever we want, we can take whatever we want from the undesigned, undesigned funds. But we don't know how long this is going to last and how much of an impact it's going to have. One of the great things right now, though, is that we're not going to make any decisions for a couple of weeks at the council level. So hopefully, we can get some additional information and data by that point. And then lastly, the only other thing I wanted to bring up is that are there any raises in the actual budget that we can hold off on for now?
So all of the contractual raises are in the, in the budget as proposed. And all of the non-union raises that typically are tied to the budget are in there, that, I'm sorry, that are tied to the union increases are in there. And there are raises on the municipal side that are associated with agreements that have been made with employee, non-union employees outside of contract or, I, I shouldn't, I, I don't mean to imply contract there. But the, the work that's been done by some of our department heads has been discussed with department heads and adjusted. And yes, that includes proposed pay, pay increases. So yes, is, is the, is the short answer. The contractually obliged contracts in order, contractually obliged raises can't be modified without going back to the unions and negotiating those, those contracts. And even the contracts with individual or the agreements, the relationships with individual employees who are not members of a union really need to be discussed and worked through. I, I would worry again about making or trying to make sort of a strong man assertion here with the unions, with labor, with non-union employees and put us at a detriment going forward. Again, the, the whole point with the, the two graphics, the one on the, on the private sector and the one on the public sector, is that we're, we're always trying to keep that, that difference between, you know, surplus and, and revenue tight. And that's true even as we're going down, even as things are going down. As revenue declines, we try to stay tight. We're not trying to reduce expenses because revenues are going down. We're trying to maintain sort of a level path, a straight path, through whatever economic circumstances we're dealing with. In the private sector, if revenues get down, expenses drop immediately because that's what your, your whole view of the world is. In the public sector, that's not the whole worldview. The whole worldview is keep the steady course, keep the program going, keep doing what the public expects you to do. And don't react as if this were a profit-making enterprise. We're not a profit-making enterprise, and our goal isn't to preserve the surplus that the taxpayers have entrusted us with. Our, our goal is to use the surplus that the taxpayers have entrusted us with wisely. And wisely means preserving their programs, maintaining the capacity to run those programs effectively over time. And part of that has to do with not burning employees.
Thank you. The other quick thing is, maybe Zach can answer this. At what point would we affect our bond rating in terms of drawing down on the undesigned funds? And the reason why I bring that up is because it's going to, if we affect our bond rating, it's going to cost us more money to borrow.
This is Zachary Saul, Finance Director. It would take a significant amount to draw down, and it would be outside of our policy, which would really raise the eyes of the credit monitoring bureaus. Moody's being the most conservative and always takes an approach of worst-case scenarios would probably, if we ventured outside of that low range, is when it would raise significant concern.
President, this is Rob Zarnetsky. I would just add that we did have a, we had a rating by Moody's two days ago. And we had a conversation with Moody's raider committee last week. They know the strategy that South Kingstown has used, has proposed here. They know we're talking about $1.4 million in, in reserve balance being used for the budget next year. That gave them no pause and resulted in the same bond rating that we had last year. And in fact, I would suggest that that response, using that fund balance and the description of why and how that fund balance was going to be used is part of the reason we weren't pinged in a B-rating during this very difficult time.
This is just Zach again. So it's not just the fund balance that would impact our rating. Other things that can, other factors that can lead to a downgrade is an erosion of the tax base. The, you know, any material increases in long-term liabilities outside of pensions. We don't control, we have no control because our employees are part of the state pension program. And also any significant decline in business and tourism that could lead to a trend. And I, I repeat that, lead to a trend in a weak financial operation. So the fund balance is one factor, but there are others that could, that they take in a combination and look at. They try not to isolate just one when coming to a complete rating.
President, I'm sorry, this is Rob Zarnetsky again. Just so folks are aware, Zach's describing this exactly right. Moody's looks at the environment, the social factors and the governance factors. And I would suggest that the governance factor here very clearly included an analysis of how we're dealing with COVID-19. And part of what we described to Moody's was that we were going to reduce the fund balance so as to maintain our programs through a trying time. Rather than having programmatic shock during, added to an economic shock, we're going to maintain programmatic stability in this economic shock. And hopefully, what that does is it puts us in a better position at the other side of this economic shock to be competitive among the communities that are trying to attract businesses and residents coming out of New York, coming out of Connecticut, coming out of Massachusetts, coming out of other places in, in Rhode Island. We don't want to add programmatic government shock to an economic shock. That's jumping to the lifeboat, and it's, it's too soon. We're not there.
Right. So a couple of things. One, in that, in that call today also that I was kind of shocked by, I didn't realize, as an example, I think Old Mountain Lanes employs 45 people, which was a lot more than I expected. Pier cleaners, I think, was somewhere around 65. Now granted, we don't know how many of those folks live in town. But they all had their concerns, you know, their businesses are down. We also had South County Commons. Basically, he said it looks like, what, Christmas morning at South County Commons outside where, you know, it's very lightly traveled. Maybe one or two people in the offices upstairs, retail shops closed, et cetera. And then the other concern I have is even when we go back to things as semi-normal. So let's say we go back and we start opening up restaurants and allowing them to operate at 20% or 30%. That's going to be very difficult to make any money, you know, to, I guess what I'm going to be concerned about is like, how are they going to sustain themselves and for how long can they sustain themselves? I don't want to see any business go out of business, but at the same time, I, I think it's going to happen. So maybe we could, I was thinking about it earlier. We do know some of, you know, maybe we could put something out through the chamber or something where we could do some kind of a survey just to kind of gaug, gauge where some of these businesses are at. And it doesn't have to be something that's identifiable if they don't want to, you know, identify who they are. Because I'm sure someone doesn't want to say they're close to bankruptcy or, you know, or not being able to pay their rent. But I know of a business on Main Street that I know that has moved their operations to their house because they can't afford their rent. So this particular situation that we're in, it's affecting every economic status, I think, in our town from, from very high net worth individuals to people that are making minimum wage. And I think we just have to make sure that we keep that in mind. And also people that are on fixed incomes or people that thought they had a good retirement balance that they were living off of. My hope is that the stock market does rebound, but there's been some significant losses today. I know that we kind of gained back some of those losses, but today it dropped again because of this, you know, after the stimulus checks went out. Thank you.
Mr. President, I, I'd like to just put a plug in for something like. Mr. President, I'd like to just put a plug in for something like surveys. Today, we did have a conversation with some folks from the Chamber of Commerce and some other business folks. But we're going to start regular conversations because we now have the technology up and running because we've got Zoom and we can have folks dialing in. I made a point early in one of the slides that it's important for us to be having these conversations because we don't know what we don't know. And it's talking to people that helps you figure out what's going on in their corner of the community. We need to be talking to everybody at this point. And, you know, I encourage anybody who'd like to have an interest group or a business group that thinks they've got a particular set of information or a set of circumstances they want Town Hall to know about. Call my office. We want to hear from you. We want to have the conversation. It doesn't need to be one-off. We need to just make sure we're all in this together.
Thank you, Rob and Brian. This is Abel speaking. Next on our queue is Rory.
Rory McInnes, Rob, nice job. I like the items you've come up with here, definitely sort of out of the box thinking, which is which is good. I'm certainly under the belief that during economic turmoil, if governments contract with their budgets, that could further lead to, you know, exacerbating the turmoil in the local economy. So I like the ideas you've come up with. A few questions for you. One of the items, rather than doing an unconditional transfer to the schools, consider doing a series of conditional transfers. What kind of conditions would we impose on those transfers?
So, you know, the sort of archetype here is a 1% transfer at the beginning of the fiscal year. And another 1% transfer if the schools are back to regular operations in September. That's that's the concept because, you know, if they're not back to regular operations, if the kids aren't in the school buildings, then you don't need buses. Then we shouldn't be transferring money to a fund that, you know, isn't going to need the money for that purpose. So the conditions, and I've had this conversation with Mary Ann and Linda, the conditions are really, let me back up. The first thing is whether or not this is a concept the council wants to work with. We recognize that this is an unusual way to bring some flexibility into the school financing project program here. So if this is a concept that the council thinks is workable or they'd like to see work, I think we can we can sharpen our pencils and come back even tomorrow night. We've had this conversation, but even tomorrow night with some specific targets. The schools are concerned that it not be the school department, the superintendent, the school business official are concerned that it not simply be a date. Because things can happen, you know, September 1, you know, they may not be back at school. September 15, they may not be back at school, but on September 16, if the bus contract has to be reinstituted, having missed that date by one day would be a disaster. That would be the wrong way for us to design that. But we can, I think, come up with a very clear, actionable directive to the manager. And remember that the theory on the property tax transfer is the council is authorizing the manager and finance director to make a transfer. So the conditions are conditions you're telling us to look for. And if those conditions are met, then the transfer is made. We can, if this is a concept that the council would like to pursue, we can give you tomorrow night some of the conditions that might work.
I would like to see some specifics to those. I have interest in exploring that.
Okay.
Some other further questions. I know you had mentioned that currently we have a 98% collection rate on, you know, real estate taxes or property taxes. And in looking back to past hard times or the most severe, the 08 Great Recession where the collection rate was 96%. In the event that this does exceed the severity of that, and we're looking at a potentially 90% collection rate of property taxes. To make up that difference, is that pulled from the undesigned fund?
No, I think that if we're getting there, if we're getting down to 90% collection rate, we're going to start having to talk about programmatic changes. And that's why we're doing the contingency plans of 10, 15, and 25% reductions across the municipal program. It's also one of the reasons why the conditional transfer is important. Because if we're going to, if we're seeing that the tax collections are in the tank, then that may be one of the conditions or one of the elements of a condition that councils against making a transfer to the schools. If we don't have the money, we can't send it. So if we're at 90% collection, we're beginning to look at that last graph, that plan or that that scenario C where everything's falling off a cliff. 90% would be pretty, pretty brutal. We would be able to get through the year, but we'd have to draw on more undesigned fund and we'd have to make mid-year adjustments to the program. There's no doubt we'd have to make mid-year adjustments.
Okay, just a step further here on the contingency plans developed by the department heads. I know you said that 10%, 15% stretching to 25% reduction each department, considering the worst case scenario. Is that something the council could obtain prior to the April 27 meeting where we're voting on enacting the budget?
I have not put a deadline on that. I wanted to give folks some chance, some time to digest, but I can do that. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rory. Rob, Emily Comiskey. Let me unmute.
Hi, Emily Comiskey. Thank you, Rob, for your presentation. I thought it was really informative. And I also really appreciated the creativity that you and Zach have put into figuring out how we could move forward. So thank you very much to the whole team. In response to some of the comments regarding the school, sorry, my kids have decided now is a good time to get ice out of the refrigerator. In, could have been worse. In response to some of the comments regarding the school budget, I just would like to note the fact that the overall budget is increasing by, I believe it's 0.76, 0.75 or 0.76%. And in the budget that was put together, as we've discussed several times together now. And we did have, as I think everybody's aware of, a budget subcommittee with members from the town council, et cetera, involved from the beginning of the planning. So the town council is familiar with this concept already. But just want to bring it back to the table that one of the big things that we looked at in building this budget is the fact that for year, many years, we've had a significant gap between the learning outcomes between the kids that live in our health equity zone neighborhoods or has neighborhoods and those that qualify for free and reduced lunch, and then those that don't. This budget is addressing how we can meet the needs of all of our students and look to closing those gaps. Also, closing gaps between students that are receiving special education services and those that are not. The other thing I would just like to touch on is that the schools, especially in this crisis, in the moving to virtual learning, are responsible and are taking care of so much more than simply providing math and reading and so forth instruction. They're really the safety net for literally the safety of our kids. And I talked about this last night in the school committee meeting, but I think that this is a really important forum to bring that up again. That our supports that are needed are actually increasing. And in a crisis like this, as Kate touched on as well, our social emotional needs and so forth, those are only increasing. So I think that the superintendent and the entire admin team and the budget subcommittee, including the members from the town council that have participated, were really careful in making sure that we didn't come to the table with an ask that was asking for a bunch of extras, but that it was coming to the table with a budget that makes sense for meeting the needs of all of our students in the district. I think that is, one other thing I just wanted to touch on in my notes was I I received several messages today from people saying, aren't you saving money as a school district through because of the food and because of custodians, because they're not working anymore? And I think that it's important for everyone here to recognize the fact that that's not in fact true. Chartwell's is actually serving breakfast and lunch to any child in South Kingstown under the age of 18. So anyone under the age of 18 can receive breakfast or lunch seven days a week. And the custodial staff is working on projects that wouldn't have been able to be completed and haven't been able to be completed with kids in the buildings. So they're doing a lot of painting and so forth, work that has sort of long been overdue. So I just wanted to clarify that while we're here, that there might be some misconception that there are much greater savings. Obviously, a million dollars in transportation is a significant savings. But it's not quite as cut and dry as some people may think that because school is online, that all of a sudden there are are many less commitments because I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you. Thanks again.
Thanks for those clarifications, Emily. This is Abel Collins again. Joe, your hand is up next.
Thank you, Abel. This is Joe Vili again. What one other thing, and I don't have it right in front of me, Rob, so I'm going to trust that you or Zach can provide the answer. But one other thing that we know is going to be reduced in revenue in the next fiscal year is state aid from meals tax and hotel tax. So I'd like to clarify or verify that number for this fiscal year. And and if what we've heard, Rob, in today's meeting was that hotel occupancy is around 2%, so a 98% potential reduction in that hotel tax. And we know the restaurants even that are open aren't doing the volume of business that they were. So those are going to be dramatically reduced, but if you can remind me of what that number was for the last, this fiscal year. Thank you.
Sure. So I don't have the exact figure, but we're talking about $200,000 worth of revenue between the meals, beverage, and hotel tax. Zach, you may have the exact number. I will note that the guidance we're receiving so far from this state has not indicated that though that the state is not, let me back up. The guidance we've received from the state has not indicated that the state intends to change the revenue from the governor's proposed to municipalities yet. Now, what we're hoping is that the stimulus money that's coming to the state, 1.25 billion dollars that were allocated to the state of Rhode Island as part of the $2 trillion federal stimulus, that a portion of that will be committed to holding state revenues to municipalities constant. So if that happens, we're not going to see that hit, even though the businesses aren't contributing to to the the program because they don't have the customers to do so. So this is part of what's unknown at this point. It is possible that the state revenues are going to be constant or that they're going to be what the state had originally anticipated. It's also possible that stimulus money will flow to municipalities through other mechanisms, perhaps through the schools, perhaps through construction projects. So we're not at a point where we can say we know that the state revenues are going to dry up. It looks bad. There's definitely a bad signal. But there's also some good signals such as the stimulus money for that purpose, being aimed at us for that purpose. And we also have heard and have been reading that additional stimulus monies are likely to be coming out of Washington. Now, at some point, it's impossible to tell what the overall broad impact is going to be. But for our narrow purpose of figuring out, you know, are our projections of revenue reasonable? The state contributions, they're significant, but they're not the biggest chunk of our business. They're not the thing that's going to send us to the lifeboat. We're going to be able to figure out a decline in state revenues on the municipal side. Some of the special revenues that the state sends to the schools could be very detrimental. That could be a real problem.
Thank you, Rob. This is Joe again. And I think I think that this is an unknown, but we all have an understanding. I think that the state is going to be challenged itself. Let's face it, the revenue that it gets just from casinos that have been closed now for five weeks and and other areas, right? The gas tax, the, again, the meal tax or sales tax. Revenue is down at all the retailers and a lot of the other taxable places that provide taxes to the state. So they're going to have their own challenges so that 1.25 billion that's coming to them. Their ability to share that is going to be, if this goes for three months, is going to be diminished greatly. But I understand that it's not a big portion of what we rely on. But we were very happy in our early budget hearings that it had increased pretty substantially. So so there is a significant effect. Well, we know that every dollar has to give and take. So thank you.
So this is Rob Zernetsky again. Joe, your point is well taken. I mean, even on the fees and penalties that we charge locally, we're seeing a decline in revenue. Right now, we've got less revenue coming in for building permits. We've got not gone, it hasn't dried up completely, but they're down, not not hugely, but they're down. We're seeing fewer marriage licenses come in. We're seeing fewer recording fees. We're seeing less money from direct revenues as well. There's no, and heck, you know, the recreation program right now is completely stopped. So we've got nobody signing up for for rec programs. We may be able to run those programs and we're planning to run those programs. And we're hoping that those programs are all up and running for the summer. But if they're not, then those revenues will not be not be coming our way as well. There's no doubt that we are in trouble. We've hit something. This ship has hit something. We're just not ready to man the the lifeboats yet. We're not ready to abandon the ship yet. The program is definitely rocky. We have definitely got to watch, but I don't want us to to take all of our tools and use them all at once. We have fund balance and it can keep the ship afloat for a year. It will give us the time to figure out whether we need to do something else. And if we do need to start making cuts, we're going to know that early enough that we can start making those cuts. And believe me, I am not suggesting that we should, you know, absolutely positively swear off the possibility of reductions in force, voluntary pay reductions for folks, renegotiating contracts with unions. All of those tools are on the table. They're just not appropriate for us to try to use at this moment. We're okay at this moment. We are still turning the ship around, heading back to harbor, and we can get in under our own power if conditions don't get worse. If conditions get worse, we've got our finger on the on the on the radio and we can call the Coast Guard and we can start doing other things to get ourselves back if we have to. Right now, we don't need to abandon ship and we don't need to take extraordinary action. We may need to get there in the middle of the year. I'm hoping we don't, and there's some pretty good reasons to believe that we won't. But I'm not ignorant to the fact that it may happen. It could get worse.
Mr. Rob, I see your hand, Brian, but I also see Zach that you have your hand raised. Did you want to respond to that comment?
Yes, this is Zach. I just wanted to address Councilman Vili's question regarding state aid. So in the budget for this year, we increased state aid from last year based on the governor's recommendation in her proposed budget. It was about a little over $470,000 increase. The majority of that increase is being seen in the phase out of the motor vehicle tax. So the increase in the hotel tax was only about 100,000. The increase in, I'm sorry, was 10,000, the hotel tax. Meal and beverages was about 100,000, but the significant But the significant piece coming from the governor's office was the phase out of the motor vehicle tax. So we are in constant, we are in contact with the governor's office, with the Office of Municipal Finance to see if there's any indication that the governor is changing any numbers. And as of right now, this is as of last week, the she has not indicated any changes to cities and towns. So we're kind of in a holding pattern on what we should do with our revenue estimates. Municipal Finance did review the preliminary budget that was adopted and, you know, kind of gave us the same, you know, couldn't really provide much clarification and told us to stay in the same holding pattern. So we're we're in constant contact and will adjust as accordingly.
Mr. President, if I if I may, it's also important for the council and the public to know that the charter affords the council the ability to revisit the budget mid-year. You know, we don't, you know, we're not stuck. We're not with a budget. Yes, it's a final plan for the fiscal year. It is without a doubt a document that should not be disposed of, you know, willy nilly. It needs to be a serious management tool. But if circumstances do get worse, the council has every authority to go back and look at the at the budget and say, we need to make changes. This this plan needs to be adjusted.
Thanks for that clarification, Rob. This is Abel. Next is Brian.
So, Rob, my question was gonna go towards that point. So if everything hits the fan in the middle of the year, you talked about having some options of a ten, fifteen, twenty or twenty-five percent kind of planning now, just just so that we know what that would look like if we need to pull that trigger or not at that point. But once we allocate money to the school, school department, do we have any control over that or no at that point?
No, and that's part of that's part of the reason why I think bifurcating or divvying up the allocations made as property tax transfer makes some sense. Again, if the school buses aren't running, there's no point in transferring money to the schools for that purpose. The flexibility is better if we keep it as part of the total municipal undesignated fund. It's harder to figure out how to move monies across all of the programs if one of the programs has already been allocated those monies, particularly the school program. Because as the council is well aware, you have bottom line authority over the school budget. You can't dictate, you can't pull monies back for any reason once they they've gone over there.
So my other question, I guess, would be from Mary Ann or Linda. With the fact that Rob is proposing some conditions on additional funds, do you or have you worked on what a lower amount would look like in terms of a transfer? Like, for example, one percent? I'm not sure if Mary Ann or Linda heard me. I'm sorry.
Mary Ann, it's fine if you wanna grab that. We I just wanna, could you just clarify your question? Are you speaking if we went forward with this plan?
No, the question I have is, you know, Rob was talking about some conditions in terms of maybe doing one percent now and one percent in the future. What happens to your budget if that one percent in the future doesn't come? Do you have a plan in place for that or what would that look like? And can I can also get an idea of what that would look like? I know you probably don't have the answer now, but I think it would be something that would be very useful for the council.
Linda, myself and Zach had a conversation with Rob on Friday, and we discussed this at length. And in the end, I told Rob I thought it was pretty creative. And what the condition that we spoke about was the transportation. So transportation does not take place and and we're not back in school in September. Then, no, we don't need those funds to to pay for that transportation. So that was, as I understood it, as how Rob was looking at this. Give us the one percent now and the second one percent. We'll see what happens if school opens in September and then go from there. School doesn't open in September. We don't need to roll the buses, so we don't need to pay the transportation.
And then the design around that, I think the details are something that we'll come back to the council tomorrow night. Because we don't want it to be a September one trigger. We want to make sure that if they're back in school, you know, October one, and the buses start rolling, it's not an additional one percent, but it's an additional point nine or whatever it is. So there's gonna be, you know, multiple trigger points around transportation that get us to funding the need if and when it arises, but keeps us from from sending money that we really do need for other purposes, to maintain fund balance, to make sure that we are able to address whatever other challenges are arising. Because let's face it, if the school buses aren't running, we do have problems elsewhere in town at that point. We're gonna we're gonna need some fiscal flexibility under those under that scenario.
So, Rob, going back to fiscal flexibility, once we allocate, though, what happens if, you know, things get really bad economically for the town? And we've committed X number of dollars, I'm not, whatever that number is. What if we don't? What if we run out of money? I'm just asking, you know, I'm not saying that we're going to, but like.
Unless we have a complete collapse of our default rate, we're not gonna run out of money. Not in the next year. If we have a severe increase in our tax default rate, which, again, we just don't have a whole lot of of reason to believe we're going to have. But if we do, then there are going to have to be changes in the program. We're gonna have to adjust the program. Now, one of the reasons that having that contingent, transportation contingency is beneficial is let's play this out a little bit. Let's run the scenario. Come September, the school buses aren't running, the kids aren't back in school. That means that we're still, you know, sort of in a bad situation and businesses aren't necessarily back up and running either. If the schools aren't open, restaurants aren't gonna be open. Now, if that's our situation, I'd rather have a million dollars to deal with town employees and dealing with the the reduction in the cost on town side than have it sitting in an undesignated fund over at the school department, not being able to really do anything there either. So we do increase flexibility. If we get to November and we're still not running school buses, those monies are available for us as we're trying to figure out what we're going to say going into discussions with town employees. The school employees are covered in that environment because we've already made the allocation necessary to to cover them with the first one percent. Our folks would be in jeopardy in November at that point. I need the monies available so that we can we can avoid layoffs for as long as possible. Again, you know, I hate keep it, I hate to keep coming back to this analogy. But the line that we have to keep in mind is stay out of the lifeboats for as long as possible. Stay on deck, tie people to the the rails with safety lines and stay on deck. We need to stay in this game long enough to get home safely.
Thank you, Rob. This is Abel again. Joe, you are next in line.
Yeah, just two quick questions. Joe Vili again, one for Zach, and then I have a question for you, Abel. Zach, if if we were to successfully have a bond referendum approved, do we have any idea approximately what the interest rate would be?
This is Zach. So that is too, I think it's too early to tell now what the market is, would bear at that time. I can just give you an example of today or this week. The last six days outside of today, we did see a drop in the yields in the market. For example, another community in another state talking with our fiscal advisor did a twenty million dollar bond referendum. Double A one community just about our size and were able to secure that deal at two point zero three percent. So in a recognizing that it's a challenging market, I don't wanna put a number out there because it's too early to tell. But for the first time, we are seeing stimulus money and is allowing the feds to backstop, excuse me, backstop municipal bonds, which were not, which were not done in two thousand eight because there was a rush on liquidity. Everyone was putting money into the into the into the municipal market. So it's hard to, I don't wanna predict the future this far in advance. But, you know, we're seeing that things are going to are somewhat stable. We'll know better when we do the small four million dollar school bonds in a couple, you know, in a couple of weeks. We're hoping that, you know, the trend will stay and we can stay in that two percent range. We did budget for four percent. And on the larger school project, it was in the capital plan, it was at a four percent rate. We're hoping we'll be south of that number if we have to go there. It'll all be dependent on, you know, what happens if there is a referendum or if there is a change in scope that will, you know, drive different factors.
Right. No, I appreciate that and I appreciate your answer. I appreciate the unpredictability, especially with this. I don't wanna call it a new normal, but this new condition in in our economy. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Abel, the question I had for you was, so there in in the Zoom menu on the bottom there, there's a Q and A and there's some questions in there. Are you planning, because this is sort of new to all of us, are you planning to address those as public comment? Or how do you?
That's a good question, Joe. In fact, thanks you for raising that to my attention. I know that I think maybe when I get to, when we get to the end of our comments here as a group, I will raise those issues and try to address them to who they're addressed to. And if we can answer them, we can, and then we'll move on to bringing the attendees in. So, yeah, I'll try to move it along here. Next on our list is Stephanie.
Thank you. Okay, so I wanted to just make sure that as we're talking through this, like this out of the box plan that Rob presented, that we're really careful with the way that it's worded. Because I don't want it to be misunderstood by anybody here or in the community. And I wanna make sure I'm not misunderstanding it that, you know, this series of conditional transfers throughout the year, these aren't conditions that we as committee members or administrators are meeting. These are conditions that are present or not present in the economic or social environment. Is that correct? Because I feel like the way sometimes our questions or comments are being worded, it kind of indicates that these are like, almost like behavioral gates. And I don't understand that to be the case. So I just wanna make sure we're really clear to the community.
So, Mr. President, if I may, you're exactly right. The charter here in South Kingston gives the town council bottom line authority over the school budget. It does not, the council does not, the municipality, the town hall does not have the authority to tell the school committee how to spend the dollars that have been allocated for the education program. These are gateway conditions that determine whether additional funds will be made available to you for educational purposes, which is actually part of the reason why the conditions need to be put in place, I would argue, at this point in time. Because if we were to send two percent to the school department now and you're not operating buses in September, October, November, December, you still have those monies. And we don't have the flex, they are committed, they are dedicated to the school program. We couldn't reposition those, reuse those, repurpose those monies for a different purpose. So you're right, they're not about determining the educational outcome, the educational program. They're simply triggers that allow more monies to flow to cover the program.
Okay, thank you. And then I also just wanted to just reiterate that this isn't, I mean, the budget that was prepared, it was not, it wasn't prepared by the school committee. And it wasn't just imposed on the school committee by the administrators. It was born of a, like a hybrid group, the budget subcommittee. And it it helped to create what, as Linda said at the beginning, was a number she felt she could defend because it was a right sized budget. It's not based on expansions or reductions. In fact, like, we're doing a lot of, like metaphors this evening. This won't be a ship metaphor, but more like if you were building a home, we're not wanting to like build a new garage or chop off the garage. We're looking at a new house plan based on what is needed. And I know that's a new way of thinking, but it really did stem from a deep understanding of a profile of a twenty-first century graduate and learner and following that thread all the way back to early childhood education. And then thoughtfully empowering teachers and administrators and building that budget from there. And then working within that hybrid budget subcommittee that was comprised of administrators and school committee members to make sure it was something that we could all stand behind. So, you know, I just, it's not, you know, just giving money to the school committee or giving money to the school department. This is a really thoughtfully right sized budget that, again, I I do feel like Linda being the expert in, you know, learning and curriculum and pedagogy, like she has said many times, like she can stand behind this. This is the right thing for kids. And as like Sarah said last night, this is something that we feel like we can stand behind as stewards of public education in the town, despite being in a crisis. And, you know, it's it's very important and it's a huge honor to actually be involved in some of the really critical supports that are making this less of a crisis for kids and their families. So I just wanted to add that in there that like, it can't be said enough that there was a lot of thought put into creating this budget that we can really stand behind.
Thank you, Stephanie. So at this point, I don't see any hands raised among us panelists. Any final comments before I go to the Q and A? All right. I am, so I'm gonna pull these up. One, this is a public hearing. So we do want people to identify themselves in these questions for the public record. Unfortunately, they come across as anonymous attendee in a lot of cases here, it looks like. So I'll begin, the first one is, looks like it's just a, maybe it was an emoji, didn't come across. The second one from anonymous attendee at eight forty-three P M. Asked if someone wants to move forward with a petition or referendum per charter, is there going to be an allowance for digital signatures?
Mr. President, yes, we've spoken to legal counsel and to the town clerk. And we believe the way that we will handle this is that a petition will be circulated and email responses from folks so long as they identify themselves. And we can tag the name and the address to an actual registered voter. That will serve as a digital signature. So yes, digital signatures will be allowed for petitions.
Very good. Thank you, Rob. The next question is, I believe Emily said all kids in S K get free meals. Why all kids as opposed to just the kids that need help with meals at zero cost or a reduced fee?
This is Mary Ann. I'll take that question. The state of Rhode Island, our school lunch program is is approved by R I and R I via the USDA. As we started this this particular situation that we currently in across the country, we we were not getting reimbursed because of the fact of the number of free and reduced kids we did have. As things started unfolding, USDA and R I realized that there are economic impacts on families throughout the country in Rhode Island and in South Kingston. So at that point, USDA decided the best way to handle this is to reimburse the local districts for the cost of their lunches, for each lunch they provide. And they would provide lunches for all children, even young adults, anyone under the age of eighteen. The lunches are now being picked. The lunches are now being picked up. The students do not have to be with the parents. The parents can come by themselves. And so all students are provided lunch, whether they're South Kingston students, attending South Kingston schools or not.
Right. Thank you for that information, Mary Ann. I was not even aware. So the next question is from Greg at 8:49 PM. Will the federal aid pay for the extra costs the school system is experiencing? I don't know if that's related to the food question or more broadly. I try to answer both, I suppose.
So this is Linda Savastano Superintendent. The federal aid that we spoke about earlier, we are not sure what the restrictions will be on that. Historically, when we've received federal aid, we have to, we have tight restrictions. We have to write for that and meet those requirements. We should be finding that out very soon, though. As far as dollars for re, and there will be reimbursement for food services that we are incurring.
And Mary Ann, again, the reimbursement for the school lunch preliminary numbers, what we're looking at is that we're hoping to break even as it relates to food costs and labor costs associated with that. The number of students that are picking up the lunches have increased as we've let folks know what the program is placed and when they can pick up the lunches.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ann. This is Abel again. Our next questions are from Jeff Clark. I'll just take them in order. How is there no operational savings over the past month for schools when the facilities are closed?
This is Mary Ann again. The school facilities, we may see some slight operational savings. Obviously, the boilers aren't running. We have shut off the boilers when they're using a little less electricity and heat. However, the, as Emily had spoken about earlier, the custodial and maintenance staff has taken on a number of small projects or projects within the schools. They've done a lot of painting, a lot of repair work and stuff like that with the schools that they can't do while school's in session and they can't do during the summer because of the cleaning that takes place during the summer. So some of the costs that we see, we have seen in, some of the savings we've seen with the, the closing of the schools has been redirected to working on the schools. Also, as we launched this virtual learning, there were some costs incurred for the districts, software related costs and also a lot of hot, not a lot of hardware, but hardware related costs for laptops and things like that. So devices can be available for all students, no matter what the grade level they are in.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ann. The next one is, where are the free lunches available? Chartway is still providing the same service.
This is Mary Ann again. Free lunches are available at Curtis Corner Middle School every morning from 8 to 9:30. Lunches are available from 11:30 to 1:00. We're exploring and we're hoping to implement that students will be able to take food for the weekend. That's one thing we're working on and we have to go through the approval process through RIDE and USDA. Parents can come, like I said, by themselves. They don't need to bring their children. And they can pick up both breakfast and lunch in the morning. They do not have to come back for lunch. And we also are providing hot lunches. We just implemented that a couple of weeks ago.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ann. Just a note, this is Abel Collins again. In a couple of, after a couple more questions here that are listed, I'm going to switch over to the attendees. So if folks could please stop putting questions into the Q and A and instead we'll, we'll move over to the oral questions. So Jeff Clark asked another question at 9:06 PM. Everyone else in the workforce is taking a massive slash in income. Could everyone on this panel please indicate how much their income has been affected?
On this one, I would actually suggest that the premise isn't correct. One of the good things for South Kingston, one of the bright spots is that our two major employers, the University of Rhode Island and South County Hospital, have not experienced the sort of displacement that is common in the retail and the hospitality sectors. There are clearly sectors that have been hit hard, but we're also fortunate in South Kingston town to have a number of employers and a workforce of folks who work for the state, folks who work for hospitals, the folks who work for the universities and other large institutions that have not been affected the same way. The pain is not evenly distributed in this, in this event. It is definitely the case that we have to watch out for the community members who have been hardest hit. But there are clearly strong sectors in our economy still here in South Kingston.
Thank you for that response, Rob. I will note that this is a public hearing relative to the town budget. So this question is pretty tangential. I will open it up to panelists here. If you'd like to answer it, feel free. Or if not, I will say that, yeah, the impacts of this crisis are widespread among different sectors of the economy. I work in an essential business personally in the renewable energy field. We've seen a slowdown in business. It hasn't led to a reduction in my hours yet, but that could certainly come. So I know everybody's in a hard spot these days and we're all trying to make our way through it as best we can. I appreciate the question. Next question is anonymous attendee at 9:13 PM. If school were to fully resume in September, meaning there are no conditions to factor in or out of the budget, would the plan be to provide a lump sum to the schools? Without knowing what will happen in September, how can you plan to either fund the schools in one payment versus fund them in smaller increments? Is there a way to plan for both options contingent on what happens in September?
So, Mr. President, the way that this would have to work is that the budget is built around that 0% tax increase. So no tax increase is the baseline. We would be drawing fund balance to the tune of $1.4 million. And if the contingency occur, did not occur, if the extra funding were not necessary for the schools because they didn't have the school bus operations, then the amount drawn from undesignated fund would be reduced. So the $500,000 that represents 1% would not be transferred and there would be no need to draw on the municipal undesignated fund balance. Essentially, what we would be doing by creating this condition is avoiding a transfer of undesignated fund to, from the municipal side to the school side. That's essentially what we'd be doing.
All right. Thank you for that, Rob.
Planning for both, I guess. I mean, the answer is we're planning for both.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Next is more of a statement than a question. So the food being served is not at an additional cost to the school or not an additional cost to the school. That's from an anonymous attendee. The next question is Roland Benjamin at 9:14 PM. Is there any consideration of, I think that's supposed to be using, current year anticipated surpluses to provide tax abatements, not just deferrals, for local business and property owners directly impacted by state and local executive actions?
So, Mr. President, this is Rob Zarnetsky again. In a sense, yes. I mean, we're looking at making adjustments to the health and dental program expense lines that gets us some, that gets us a bit of money that we can put toward tax relief. Now, when we get to the question of actual reductions, abatements, cuts, we get to this, this problem that I was trying to point out in the presentation, that you have to make deeper cuts to get to any meaningful reduction in taxes. Again, a million dollar reduction in program which decimates the EMS or decimates, takes half of the funding from the recreation program or eliminates all funding of outside agencies and the libraries. You know, the list is quite brutal. But a million dollars worth of program reduction yields about $70 in tax relief for a property owner. The impact of the reductions in the program are probably more injurious to the community than the reduction or that the relief, the abatement would be to an individual property owner or taxpayer. So we're trying here to balance what we do to the community in the name of doing something for the community. If we do something symbolic for the community and decimate an element of a program that makes the community attractive, we haven't done ourselves any favor. We've actually hurt ourselves in the long run. So the answer to the question is yes, to the extent that we're using amendments or changes to the operational program to reduce the tax burden. Yes, to the extent that we're using rainy day fund monies to reduce the tax burden. But no, we can't go as far as to do a deferral or an, I'm sorry, can't go so far as to do an abatement or reduction that's going to be meaningful. We'd have to really, to get to 140, I'm sorry, yeah, to $140 reduction for that $350,000 house owner, we'd have to take $2 million out of program and $2 million is the entire paramedics program. It, you know, it just, it's brutal cuts that you're talking once you start talking about that operation.
All right. Thank you, Rob. This is Abel Collins. I see that folks have put in some new Q and As. I'm just going to ask you actually to raise your hand when we go over into the attendees section. And Susan, if you could bring everybody over into the meeting at this point, we will, we will begin to take public comment that we can hear. So if Jeff Clark, Greg and Greg want to raise their hands over here, that would be a good time to do it. Or anybody else who wants to make a comment. Let's be clear about that. All right. Greg, I'm going to unmute you now. And you will need to. Isn't it working for me?
How's that?
Okay, that works.
Is the school side able to achieve the savings in health and dental? Municipal side did?
It's Mary Ann Crawford. Yes, we did. The budget that was presented to the town manager had the health insurance as 2%.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. See, that. Gary, I am unmuting you. I hope that that works.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. First, the, the money that you're using on the undesignated funds to eliminate a tax increase, what happens? What are your plans next year? Obviously, we, we never use that money for operational budgets. We always use it for one time expenses. And next year, there will be that, that money will be a hole in next year's budget. So how do you plan on dealing with that?
Thank you for the question, Gary. This is Abel. I'll let Rob take first try.
Great. So what, tapping the undesignated fund balance would do this year is bring us down from about 16% to about 14% reserves in our, in our undesignated fund. Our town policy is to be between 10% and 17%. So it doesn't actually create a hole in next year's budget if revenues remain constant. If we see that revenues are not constant, if we're seeing that we've got large numbers of defaults or even if we're just seeing that we've got slow payments and therefore we've got taxpayers who are running into major impediments in paying their taxes, then we'd have to adjust program. At that point, it begins to be the time to start cutting and reducing the number of offerings that we're making. It, it's time for us to start thinking about reducing personnel. If we get to the point where it looks like this isn't a short term event, then, then we have to make the adjustments so that we don't end up with holes or excessive expenditures next year, the 21, 22 fiscal year.
Okay, then I also had a question on, on the, how are you going to do the, you mentioned about taking digital signatures for petitions and referendums. You know, it would be helpful for the public, Rob, if you could put that in writing and maybe have available for tomorrow night so that we could know exactly what the process would be. That is from, I mean, this is April, what, 15th today? And, and I believe you're going to, according to charter, by the 18th and petitions have to be in by the 21st. And, and then May 1st to May 12th doesn't give the public a whole lot of time to process what needs to be done. So if, and then take it to the next step, I would ask you to, when, you know, if those petitions are successful, you know, how are we going to hold the referendum in June? Like the charter says, how was that going to take place? And what is the process of that going to be? And not just verbally, if you could put that in writing, that would be great. So we could, we could all see it and know how we're going to do it.
So I will just say this, the charter provisions have not been waived. There's still the charter provisions. The question of how to collect signatures is the only thing that is different. So if you request the forms, they're available today. You could get the forms at any time. And the only question is how to make sure that you aren't knocking doors looking for ink signatures. And we'll put that.
I mean, where would the, where would the emails? You said there were going to be emails to the, to the town clerk's office or how was that going to?
Yes.
That's what we'd like to know, the process, what the actual process would be.
Yes.
And then, then are we actually going to go to a polling place in June? Or how are we going to do that?
Actually, on a vote of this type, it's not perfectly clear how that would work right now. If we use the state presidential preference election as our model, we would be encouraging write-in ballots and we'd, we'd have a physical place where people could vote. Yes.
Okay. And then the only, but my last question is, is I'm, I'm still a little confused about the, the transfer to the schools about what you were talking about. I, I know in the past, you know, the town has, has been reluctant to guarantee the school department budget. So that's why we've always done the tax transfer rather than, than, than a specific budget. We give, we, we transfer a specific amount of money to the schools and that's what we guaranteed to do. But we don't guarantee their budget if something else falls short on their end. We only guarantee the tax transfer. But I, I thought that, I'm confused as to how you cannot give them, is that what you're proposing, not give them part of the transfer? Or am I misreading that?
So my understanding is that state, and Mary Ann, you can correct me here. This is Rob Zarnetsky. I'm sorry. My understanding is that the state law requires that we maintain the level of effort. So we cannot go below the number that was given to the school district last year. That is a requirement that we maintain the quality and numerical equivalency of each year's budget at least. Whatever the school, whatever the town council deems appropriate to add to that base can be given as a single property tax transfer or as more than one property tax transfer during the course of the year. So what we would be doing in this instance is making, for simplicity sake, two property tax transfers, one for 1% and another for 1% upon the occurrence of a condition, that condition being that the schools are rolling buses and they are occupying physical buildings.
Okay, but I guess what I'm confused about is, like, what is in the budget? What is the tax transfer to the school? I don't have it right in front of me, but do you know what that is at this point?
The proposed in. The proposed and the proposed and adopted preliminary was 2%.
No, but I mean, what is the dollar figure?
Oh, it's $1 million roughly.
A million dollars more than last year is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, so so whatever that figure is, because I don't have it in front of me, whatever that figure is, then you're proposing not if that passes in the budget, they're proposing that you may not give them all the money that has been passed in the budget for the tax transfer?
So we're you're.
I'm not sure how you can do that.
So no, you're right. So the the more precise way to say it is, we're talking about the 2% that is above the property tax transfer that was the base last year. So we're really only talking about the 2% additional. So that that's maybe.
If it passes in the budget, how can you not transfer it?
So again, what we're contemplating is that if the condition doesn't occur, then it's never been appropriated for the school purpose, because the purpose never arose. There's no need for a bus. Therefore, the condition hasn't arisen. Therefore, the transfer is not authorized. Therefore, the transfer is not made. And we don't take money from the municipal undesignated fund and transfer it to the schools, which no identified purpose for it. Therefore, it would roll into either another operation in the schools or their their undesignated fund balanced.
Okay, I'm okay. I just don't know how that happens when you pass it in the budget and the budget is passed that way. I just don't know how legally you can not give them the money.
Well, the budget contains a condition.
I didn't know. I didn't know budgets could contain conditions like that.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why they can't.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Muted. For I was muted there for a second. For folks moving forward, if you want to make comment, do state your name to begin with. I see, you know, Gary C, which is Gary Chapman, for the record, or Greg, which I assume is Greg Sweet. But if you can state your name before you make your question, that would be ideal. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to be recognized from the public? I see Doral Beasley. And I've tried to unmute you on my end. Let me see if I can do it again. You are unmuted. But your audio is is not coming across correctly. Try that again. I think there might be an issue with your microphone if there's some microphone option, or maybe if you think you can type your question into the Q and A. Or one thing that I've heard discussed is potentially disconnecting and reentering the meeting. I don't know if that's actually useful way of going with these issues.
Mr. President, if it's absolutely necessary, he can also call in. He won't if he's on a computer and it sounds like a digital audio problem, if he calls in, he may have a better connection. And the number is on the agenda.
All right. Sounds like an alien, Doral. Let me. Can someone type in the number that Doral should call in that Q and A space? I'll actually try and get it. Anyway, Doral, if you're listening to me, the number you want to call in on for the teleconference line is 1-929-205-6099. Again, that's 1-929-205-6099. And once you do that, there's an ID number 567738011. And you can find that on the clerk base agenda. Go to that. While we wait for Doral to figure out the technical difficulties, is there anybody else who would like to speak? I don't see any other speakers at the moment. Does anybody have Doral's number? Let me give them a call.
Abel, sorry. A couple of people are saying that they called in, but they don't know how to say that they want to speak.
Okay, for people who are on their phones and want to raise their hand, you press star nine. And when once you get recognized and we unmute you on our end, you'll have to press star six to unmute yourself. All right. And somebody has posted the information on how to dial in on the Q and A for folks who would like to do that and might be having trouble with the audio on their computer.
Doral, I sent you Doral, I sent you a text with the phone number and the ID.
All right. So Doral, if you have called in at this point, to raise your hand, press star nine.
You also might want to put so his computer audio is still unmuted. I don't know if you want to mute that.
I have. Is that you, Doral? Are you on the line?
I am on the line.
Please state your name for the record and go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry. I was trying to call before and I couldn't get your attention. My name is Kristy Fish.
So Doral, if you have called in at this point.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. If you could turn off the audio for.
I just turned that off. Okay, my name is Kristy Fish. I am calling just to talk about some of what I heard tonight and give my input as a parent and a community member. I just wanted to compliment Rob on what he said, because I think he's echoing what we're hearing throughout the country locally from our governor about balance. And he talks about not adding programmatic shock to economic shock. And just as we as a country are trying to balance health and economics, I think we also need to balance economics and education right now. I don't think what's proposed in the school budget, in my opinion, is negotiable. I think a lot of amazing points were made tonight in favor of passing the budget, actually in the face of what we're going through right now. Kate brought up mental health and how that is a huge issue right now. Part of the budget that the school is looking at is for social emotional. And that's something that is going to be even more prevalent in the aftermath of this for our students at all levels. Something Emily brought up is that the budget that's proposed is addressing our most vulnerable community members. Before this started, they're going to be even more vulnerable again in the aftermath of this. And I just don't think it's okay to have our kids' education become another casualty because of what we're going through right now. But I also hear what everybody's saying about money and budget. As the average taxpayer that Joe spoke about, I would not be okay with not passing this budget. I think that it is absolutely necessary. And to continue with the analogy that Rob kept using with the boat, this isn't about and Stephanie said, too, this isn't about buying a new boat. This is about strengthening the boat that we have. And quite honestly, if there were compartments in the boat, there are some aspects that are leaking a little bit that this budget can help and support, which is, you know, special education, social emotional learning, among other things that are budgeted on the item list. And as Stephanie also said, this is something that was given a lot of thought and consideration and didn't just involve one party, it involves many parties thinking about what is best for our kids. And we need to do what is best for our kids, regardless of what's going on around us right now. Therefore, I believe that the budget needs to be approved.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right. I see Sarah Bell would like to talk. I'm gonna unmute you. Okay, Sarah Bell, if you could state your name for the record, and you are on.
This is Kevin. Kevin Bell. Apparently, the Zoom account has the her profile set up. So my name's Kevin Bell. So yeah, I just went to been, you know, in ever since you put this virtual stuff, it's been initially really nice. One thing I wanted to say is, Rob, I really enjoyed watching your presentation. And and also the propose of the 0% or 0, not increasing the taxes and stuff like that. So I just wanted to, as far as like a, you know, homeowner, and I have a lot of good friends who are actually, you know, run business within the South Kings Town. And also with within myself, there's about myself, about 25% less income. That's basically affected affected me. And I actually, I feel grateful that I'm still working. I know some people who are not, and they're actually basically kind of kind of struggling and stuff like that. So so I just it's more kind of more of a broader, more of understanding. So I just like I hear the stool is the school committee and basically with the proposal, and there's 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 certain programs and stuff like that. And I'm not, you know, I mean, I'm not the type of person, you know, like definitely pay my taxes and so forth like that. And I definitely, you know, support kids and stuff like that. But when it comes down to like, hey, this is kind of the situation right now, you know, I really need to, you know, you know, based a lot of people are like on like, hey, I can't afford, you know, I have to close my business or, you know, have to move move out of South Kings Town, just because they can't afford the rent and stuff like that. So one thing I do kind of know is that it do have programs, especially with the governor and also with federal aid, you know, that would actually help with school programs and stuff like that for this type of, you know, situation. So it's not like, you know, I just want to kind of bring that up up to. There is support outside, especially with the federal and even with the, you know, the governor, you know, I mean, of course, she has a certain certain budget and stuff like that. But I mean, so with the town, but under these types of circumstances, it's not like, hey, guys, we're pulling the plug across, you know, the school, you know, programs and stuff like that, you know, def definitely there there are programs that they will give the money, you know, to 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 the school. But I just wanted to let you know, it is definitely stressful. You know, I mean, I pay a lot, you know, property tax, you know, and so just, you know, I'm, I was actually kind of grateful that we hopefully that the pass where it's not going to be increased, you know, I'll be fine with that. But you know, if we have to, you know, if it has to go up, I'll be like, you know, come on, you guys, you know, like, you know. And so, so anyways, I just want to kind of share that and do appreciate this. So.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. See. Somebody from the last three digits, 370. You are unmuted now. If you can state your name for the record, that would be great. And turn off the audio in the on the Zoom while you're speaking.
Hi, this is James Blakeney. I'm a resident of Wakefield. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to to say that I think all of this has been been really interesting. And I would second or third or fourth, I don't know how many people said it, but I really appreciate what Rob has done in setting the context for for this discussion. And, you know, with all of the concern about spending, it's totally warranted. At the same time, I think it's worth noting and paying attention to the fact that the leadership in this country has had a we've had a situation that has created a huge strain on everyone and every business. Yet the trillions of dollars coming from the government is designed to alleviate those issues, whether they be at the federal, state, or local level. And I do believe that staying the course at this point on a lot of things that are happening for us is a wise decision because of such severe uncertainty that we have right now, and knowing that we do have all of that support from the federal government that I do believe will have an impact as well from the state government. And as Rob eloquently put it, you know, we're not, we're not necessarily running this like a business, because we do need to be the back stop as the government to 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 be able to weather these storms and and then move forward stronger than before. So I just feel that, you know, staying the course for now is the wise decision while having the contingencies in place for adjustments if they need to be made. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any hands raised. I know Doral is out there wanting to speak to us, though. Have we been able to communicate with him, anybody? On our end. Now, let me see if I unmute him if he's resolved. Doral, I have unmuted you. Could you try to see if your microphone is working now? No. Do you think, Rob or Susan, I believe he actually even had some documents that he might have wanted to screen share with us? Is that correct? Rob, you're muted at the.
That might be something he may be able to do. I it's walk him through sort of grind, though, if he's going to do that.
He's he's put on the Q and A. He is on the phone. Okay, so if you hit star nine now, Doral. Or if you tell or if you can type in what your phone number is, I can probably figure out which one you are and unmute you. Or if you tell, or if you can type in what your phone number is, I can probably figure out which one you are and unmute you.
Guys, five minutes, thirty late.
Kate, what are the last three digits of Doral's phone number?
Six, seven, nine.
He's there twice, Abel, on the attendees list. We can bring him in that way.
All right, Doral, I have unmuted your line from our end. I don't know if we're able to unmute your phone if it's muted automatically on your end. Susan, can you make sure he's not muted?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. All right. So when the state comes out with their when the state comes out with their
Hold on, Doral, just one second. If you could make sure the audio is off and I'm also going to, okay, I think your computer is muted from our end. Okay, proceed. Are you, can you still hear me, Doral?
Hear me?
Yes.
Right. So when the
Doral's muted himself again.
Okay, when the state comes out with their per pupil expenditure chart every year, when they calculate per pupil expenditures, it's total expenditures from all sorts of funds. So when I look at our budget or your budget and in the revenue side, so I see I see the tax appropriation there, I see the gross operational revenue. And then below that, I see other things under the federal grants, the food service, all that. So when I go over to expenses and I look at that sheet, there's salary and benefits at the top. And then you come down to the federal grants part and there's more salary. And then you get down a little bit farther and there's benefits there and way down at the bottom, depending on what year you are in. You get some more salary. So the way I look at your budget is you have to take everything that says salary and add it together. So that gives you your total amount of money that you have in your bucket to spend on salary. And then you would do the same for benefits. So for instance, this year where at the top it says thirty-three million, three hundred and sixteen, whatever. When you add up the when you add up the other stuff in there that says salary, actually, the total comes up to hold on a second. Comes up to thirty-two. Okay, that's projected. Hold on a second. All right, I gotta go back. Last year, when you guys dropped from four hundred and eighty-five employees down to this year's four hundred and fifty-four. So you had thirty-some people come off the budget. To determine what this year's salary and benefits would have gone to, you would take last year's salary and benefits, all of it. You add it up and you divide by the four hundred and eighty-five and you come down with a number, average conversation per employee now. Then you would take that number and multiply it times the number of employees that you're expecting to be in school on September, whatever it is, when schools open up. So when I did that for this year, I came up with a total of forty-six million, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and some change there. Now, your number was okay, so then, then what I did was I know from looking back ten years, the budget for salaries in this district had been seventy-one point seven percent of the total amount for salary benefits was for salaries, twenty-eight point three was for benefits. So and over the last ten years also, no, actually, that was a nineteen-year average. So that goes all the way back to two thousand and two. Then also, no, going back to when the when the funding formula kicked in in two thousand and twelve. And since then, every year for the last almost ten years now, the average raise per year for the district for, you know, it's been two point four percent, four percent for benefits. So then I took those numbers that I got after I multiplied the twenty eighteen, nineteen actuals divided by the number of people. So that gives you what your base would have been for when you calculate the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So then I took that number and I multiply it times the four hundred and fifty-four, I come up with numbers. And then I took those salary benefits and I added two point four percent for the salary to all those, to the salary part and four percent for the benefits. So I came up with forty-seven million, nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, in your adoption budget, you had forty-eight million, eight hundred and some thousand dollars. So the differential is you have like eight hundred thousand dollars more in there in my estimation for salary and benefits than is needed. I can't understand where this eight hundred thousand dollars is what it's in there for.
All right, Doral, thank you.
Okay, no, just one second. So then I did the same thing for this year, and this year it's even worse. And this year, when I added up the salary and benefits, all of it that you have in your budget, and I did the same kind of calculation of mine, now that's one point four million dollars. It's inside the salary and benefits lines of your budget. It seems to me, I've done this, I've looked at this for so many weeks now, I just because it didn't make sense to me in the beginning, but it makes all the sense in the world now. I just see there's money in there that I'm not sure what the heck it's for. And just one other thing for Emily. We don't have equity in our elementary schools as far as resources. This year in Wakefield, you're spending about six thousand dollars more per kid in Wakefield than you are in Peaceville. Number one. Last year in Wakefield, Wakefield had seven teachers assistants. Mattoonik had two. And there were some days where the custodian in Mattoonik ended up being the person that would greet people at the door because somebody was sick or out. So not in every instance are these are elementary schools balanced. Especially since fifty percent of the kids at Peaceville are reduced to free lunch, way more than Wakefield.
Thank you, Doral.
Oh, I had one more, I had one more thing for you. Sorry, Abel. When you first joined the budget committee there.
Yes.
I saw, I saw a thing in the paper where you were talking about seeing whether or not the drop in FTEs had mirrored the drop in enrollment. It has not. So it started with twenty-two thousand and two, that's when we had our highest number of FTEs, six hundred and twenty. And the enrollment had just started to drop a teeny bit, but I think in twenty-two thousand and two was because, I can't remember. I think it was Kingston Hill opened up and they were, they had their first class in there, like only about fifty kids. So anyway, so so since two thousand and two, we've lost, if the NASDAQ number for September is right, at twenty-eight hundred students, that's a drop of thirty-six percent over those almost twenty years. But the FTEs have only dropped to twenty-eight percent. Now, and that's really a significant difference. Because when, in two thousand and two, when we had the, I think it was forty-three hundred and forty-eight students and the six hundred and twenty FTEs, the ratio is almost exactly seven students per FTE. So, but ever since then, that was the last time, that, two thousand and two was the last time we had an FTE rate of seven. Every year since then, our FTE numbers have been below seven. And when I looked at our FTE rates this last year, last year, and this year, the problem isn't in the high school and isn't in the middle schools, because they're actually above seven, a little bit above seven. The problem is in our elementary schools. Our FTE ratio last year in our elementary schools was five point six kids per employee. That's insane numbers. That, that's, that's a private school number. It's, and the last thing I want to say is, one of the things I looked at, I said, sorry, you got so many things. One of the things I did was I went onto the MCAS, Massachusetts Department of Education, and I found every, every school district in Massachusetts with the budget between sixty and sixty-nine million dollars. And it is the same for Rhode Island. And in total, there were twenty-four school districts between the two states. They had budgets between sixty and sixty-nine million dollars. The average was sixty-four. Well, okay, so this year our budget's sixty-four, next year it's supposed, you've got sixty-four and a half now. And when, so then what I did was I looked at those school districts and I looked in the enrollments. So I added up all the enrollments for the twenty-three school districts other than ours, and I divided by the twenty-three. And for school, every other, those school districts, other than twenty-three school districts in Rhode Island and Massachusetts that have budgets between sixty and sixty-nine million dollars, they're educating four thousand and thirty-five students. That's the average enrollment of those twenty-three school districts. We're educating twenty-eight hundred kids. That's, that's the problem we have in this town, okay? We have too many people working in our district. And I'm not even going to get into our scores right now. That, I'm going to hold that one off till tomorrow. You might even see it in the paper, hopefully, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Doral. Welcome, if there is any response. Mary Ann, potentially, in terms of any of those points raised by Doral. You're muted, let me.
Mary Ann Crawford, Chief Financial Officer. I was listening to Mr. Beersley, a lot of the numbers I could not follow as he was presenting them. And I'm not sure what exactly he's looking at. One of the things, I will remind the Council on the School Committee specifically about this year's salaries. This year's salaries, and I'll just take the general fund operating budget at this point. Last year, the salaries were budgeted at thirty-three million, three, one, six, nine, twenty-three. This year, they're budgeted at thirty-three million, nine, fourteen, nine, twenty-eight. I would like to remind the folks that one of the biggest increases in there is about five hundred thousand dollars. Relates specifically to the reclassification of the substitute. We had that outsourced and now we bring it back in, and that's about five hundred thousand dollars. So if you take that five hundred thousand dollars off the thirty-three million nine, you're down to thirty-three million four compared to thirty-three million one-six. The increase in the salaries is about a hundred thousand dollars from last year to this year. So that's just one number. And like I said, I could not quite follow what Mr. Beersley was doing with the numbers and the information. And so I really don't have too much more to say in that regard because I don't think it would be, in my, I don't think it'd be a good idea for me to comment on stuff that I really don't have in front of me at this point.
All right, I appreciate those comments, Mary Ann. I think actually that substitute expense accounts for a lot of potential discrepancy that maybe Doral's seeing. I mean, I think if there's, you know, close to, what do you say, two hundred thousand dollar increase on the salaries line item, when you consider contractual increases in salaries, you're probably, it's about where you would expect it to be with, you know, the loss of five staff people, something like that. All right. My participant, this one, is there anybody on the call on Zoom or on your phone who would like to make a comment? If you are on your phone, you need to raise your hand by pressing star nine. All right, I think we may have exhausted public comment for tonight. That's okay, we'll be back tomorrow night for more public comment. At this point, are there any other comments from? Let's see, Kate wants to speak, so you are up.
I just wanted to clear, kind of clear, make a clarification and a comment. When I was referring to the mental health crisis, and I do believe that it will be serious for our kids. I don't want to say it's just for our kids. It's for the community at large, it's for their parents, it's for grandparents, it's for people with no kids, it's for all ages and stages. And I think that's a municipal issue. And when I was making those comments, it wasn't necessary to say, speaking from a school budget perspective, is more of a municipal budget perspective. I sit in all of your budget meetings, not just the school committee, the school budget meetings. I often go to all of, all of those. And the ones that are most powerful, and I know my fellow school committee members watch them. If they're not sitting in the room with me, they're usually watching them, are the ones where the community members, the volunteer organizations, all the, I can't remember what you call them, they're like human resource, human services groups come up and kind of ask for little bits and pieces. And so my comment was also geared towards that because we are relying on our volunteers right now as Ms. Markie and Ms. Kaminsky and Ms. North of are all involved with all of that. So I want us to kind of make sure we keep that also in sight. Because what I would hate to see happen is our municipal numbers get so tight that we then can't extend the way you guys have in the past to those organizations too. And so if anyone was watching last night to our school committee meeting, I was kind of, my plea was to get creative with how we can, you know, take the transportation numbers into account when we're dealing with the budget because we know we have a savings there and so that we're not totally maxing out our taxpayers. And I think, Rob, you did a great job with your, the recommendation kind of takes that into account. And it may not be popular with my fellow school committee members, but the idea that, you know, you fund the school budget as it was last year and you do the one percent and then break it up so we know what's happening in September before the next percentage comes to cover the transportation costs. I think it just seems like at least it's showing and demonstrating that everybody gets it, that we don't know where we're going to be in September and we need to make sure we have something in place. And hey, by, you know, by June, like, you know, maybe by some miracle, you know, things we know, but we're not going to know if we want to be realistic. And I think having this kind of contingency plan, I appreciate the fact that we're looking at it like that instead of just kind of moving forward and putting the burden, extra burden on our taxpayers. So I just kind of wanted to make that statement. I just kind of wanted to make that statement, so.
Thank you, Kate. Any other school committee, town council comments? All right, we made it through the gauntlet tonight. We will be back again tomorrow night. We can probably keep it a little bit shorter tomorrow. And I want to thank you all for, for, you know, participating. I want to thank all the people who came to attend tonight and offer comments or just to listen, if that's your choice. It is really public participation that makes this whole budget process meaningful and certainly building on what you just said there, Kate, I think a lot of the organizations that we see pitching in and helping out so much in the community are a huge part of what makes South Kingstown such a wonderful place. And I think we're, we're all lucky to represent the people who live here, certainly. So thank you for being with us in these troubled times. I'll, I'll ask at this point for a motion to, or do we reopen the public hearing tomorrow or we keep it open? I can't remember. Do we have a solicitor in on the line here?
Susan, I believe these are by charter two separate public hearings. So I think you close this public hearing and you open a second new public hearing tomorrow night. Susan's nodding, so I feel comfortable with that.
Yes.
This is Brian. Please, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
All right, I hear a motion by Brian and a second by Deb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. We will see you all again tomorrow. Thank you.
Aye, thank you.
Good night.